Good evening, everybody. Welcome to December 17, 2018. Today, we are going to focus almost entirely on the Founder's Row submission. This is a public hearing, but we're going to structure it in such a way that we're first going to hear from the staff, then we're going to hear from the applicant, and then I'm going to open it up to the public so that you can respond to what you hear from the applicant as opposed to having you speak first. So with that introduction, Ms. G., can you take the roll, please?
I'm Ms. Vodisco.
Here.
Mr. Henson.
Here.
Ms. Teague.
Here.
Ms. Hockenberry.
Here.
Mr. Cresser.
Here.
Ms. Stugel.
Here.
Ms. Pointe.
Here.
All right, we're all here. All right, so can I get a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
I move we adopt this evening's agenda.
Okay, I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? All right. Are there any petitions for items "not" on the agenda? "Not" is the key word here. Okay? Seeing none, we are closing that. No old business, and we are right into new business. So let's start off with the staff report. Gary, you're going to speak to us about this?
So tonight, we have the site plan for Founder's Row as well as the consolidation plat, which is a subdivision. That's before the commission. We have a public hearing scheduled tonight. We want an open public hearing. We've advertised that with Jason property owner notice. At this time, we expect to continue that to the special meeting next Monday on the 24th. So tonight, the recommendation is that staff, to the planning commission, is consideration of final approval of the site plan contingent on administrative approval of the labeling corrections that are in the staff report, as well as staff's recommendation for consideration of final approval of the subdivision consolidation as well that goes hand-in-hand with that, and then continuation of that to the special meeting on the 24th. The application is by Mill Creek Residential and Spectrum Development LLC. They're consolidating 12 parcels. It's a mixed-use project that's six stories with elements of retail use at about $60,000, office use at about $5,000, and a two-story movie theater with about 850 seats at about 32,000 square feet. So the total project is just under 100,000 square feet at $96,000 for the commercial uses alone. The five-story residential multifamily rental units are above a podium. There's 322 market units, and then there's apartments totaling about 370,000 square feet. And there's also, in addition, a five-story age-restricted apartments, 72 units above the ground floor, commercial podium as well. These are age-restricted, and they total about 85,000 square feet. And these are also above a below-grade and at-grade parking garage. Average building heights are, total of six stories, are up to 79 feet. And the proposed project and the following application provides for approval of the site plan and the consolidation plat, as mentioned. The application materials, the specific ones that were part of this application was the site plan, the architectural elevation drawings, the TDM and parking management plan, parking reduction request, and the final plat that goes with the consolidation. So that is submission three. There's been several submissions since the original site plan submission in October 26. At that time, there was a hotel element. The special exception has changed that now to the age-restricted units in the same footprint. The action on that was in August on the 13th, and the planning commission had reviewed that and commented on that in July. Looking at the specifics of the analysis the staff did in your staff report is analysis of the zoning, comprehensive plan, the West Broad small area plan, the design guidelines. In regard to the zoning, the zoning map indicates the properties are all zone B1, limited business district. This map designation was approved as part of the original special exception and the application for that special exception, which was originally approved in 2016. Prior to that, the zoning amendment, the properties were zoned a mix of B3 and B1 and then R1B, medium density. So now, it's all been rezoned and designated for the B1. The comprehensive plan designates the properties as mixed-use. This map designation was also approved and put in place with the special exception in 2016. The West Broad Street area plan, which was adopted in April 11, 2016, provides for consistency with this application as well, the design guidelines as well. In looking at the specifics of the site plan, the staff review of the total four commission submissions, the last one dated August 14, as well as the consolidation plat, staff has done four reviews, and at this point, the site plan and the subdivision plat are in final form with the exception of administrative comments and labeling items that I've listed in the staff report. So any motion would cite those, so for administrative purposes, the staff could wrap this up. There's three waivers that are requested that are modifications to the proposed site plan. One is the parking modification for required parking. It's requested from 1,076 spaces to 1,017. That's an overall 5.8% reduction. There's also a waiver to allow commercial entrance to be within 100 feet from an R district, and that's in regard to Park Avenue and the planned commercial entrance, which is approximately 50 feet across the street from existing R district, the end of it, Park Avenue. The third waiver is landscaping buffer density in the eastern boundary to modify and reduce the quantity of shade trees due to the underground storm utilities in that 20-foot buffer area and the sheets that are cited in the staff report on those. These were also identified at the time of the special exception, so these have been known and addressed through staff reviews. So on line 242, the staff technical review comments, there's a list of a number of items that end up numbering, let's see, finally, two, 16 items. Two of them are future post-site plan items that we just wanted to flag, but the items are highlighted there, and we don't see any of them as substantial or significant in terms of changes to the plan. So I think you've had a chance to look through them. These are mainly labeling areas on the plans or, you know, just some corrections. The subdivision, as I mentioned, that would be both preliminary and final approval, and that's a consolidation plat, the format on that. The board and commissions have looked at this that are appropriate, which is the Tree Commission, the Architectural Advisory Board. And there's also public comments attached, attachment 16, 17, 18, and 19. In addition, four additional comments came in after five today, and they're included on the dayhouse for you. I guess, would you like to highlight those when I finish? Yeah, so take a look at those, and we'll highlight those in one minute. One was from Village Preservation Improvement Society, others from Deborah Foster, resident, others are from, let's see, Laura Gogel at 308 Pine Street, and then Diane Skinner, 1007B So the timing on this is the planning commission had a work session on this on July 2 in regard to the special exception amendment. We also concurrently talked about the site plan and subdivision that evening, so we had a number of staff and developer representatives here, so we were able to ask all kinds of questions from conceptual down to technical details. And then on July 16, there was a public hearing on the special exception amendment and recommendation in the city council made by the planning commission. And the city council public hearing on August 13 approved the special exception amendment, which was the switch from hotel to age-restricted. And then on September 17, tonight, we're holding the public hearing on the site plan, and we expect to continue this to next Monday, and we've scheduled a special meeting for that. And then we have a work session, a more informal discussion following this meeting. We had, there's public comment under the public hearing that's advertised, and we had hoped to allow for community comment at the work session at the chair's discretion to recognize those who, you know, want to stay for the meeting and be included in that discussion. And so we plan to do that tonight, which is a little different than our normal process, but that's what we've committed to doing. And then on September 24 is the special meeting, so that's our schedule for this item. As I mentioned, as I started off the staff report, we're recommending consideration of final approval of that site plan, and so does consolidation this evening with a continuation to next Monday. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can you help me with just some percentages? You read off some numbers. What percent, just remind me, what percent is commercial versus residential? There's multiple residential elements, so I just wanted to...
I believe it's around, I think it's 33 to 17%. Yeah, 33 to, 33% residential.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, the ratio was, I'm sorry, it would be 80, 83, and then 17. Yeah.
Okay. And what percent is green space at this point?
That, I'd have to look at the plan, so it's...
You know.
For this specific one? It's green for the sake of the calculation, or it's green in actual color? It's green in terms of, like, there's actual plantings in the courtyard spaces, but it's for modern management because it's on building. It's considered impermeable.
But the green space calculation's based on parking lot. So, and so the fact that we have garage space, there is no actual requirement for it because that's based on surface parking, and the fact that we're in structured garages, there is no 5% internal green space.
There is no requirement for that? Okay, so if I'm looking down on it, Plan View, and I see green...
Yes.
What percent would I see?
I wouldn't even begin to try to wager. I'll be honest, we've been doing this for a couple months. I have not been asked the percentage question. I can tell you, we have three landscape courtyards of various sizes on this project. I could show you them on Plan View.
When we get there, yeah, let's get...
I could show you them on Plan View and call them up.
So we have a buffer, too?
We have a requirement...
Correct, correct.
So there is some actual green space that's...
For a percentage of green space based on parking.
I agree. Normally, we get a percentage, we have a requirement. This is, I'm hearing, we have a structured parking, so the requirement's somewhat different. So I have not read about it meeting this requirement or not, so that's why I was requiring.
The information was concerned about that.
But they didn't say it didn't meet any, I mean, I read their comments. They were concerned, they wanted some money, but they didn't...
Right, for the stormwater.
Because I think the numbers you're used to seeing is in relation to parking lot landscaping requirements, and because there is no, like, surface parking lot, we don't have that here.
Okay.
So the code doesn't provide for it in regard to the parking, which is normally where you see it.
Is that an oversight, or that, is that normal?
It's normal, and it's specific in the code. So if you look at the past couple projects, 301 Broad, Tanner Hill, Tanner Hill had that outdoor plaza, but still, I mean, most of that tar scape. So, I mean, when you do structured parking, there is not an internal landscape requirement of 5% green space.
Okay, I'll take your word for it. I thought we talked about it on Tanner Hill for sure, in that sort of courtyard area at the bottom.
I mean, there may be some percentage that, you know, they could calculate based on that, but it's, like I said, it's not a requirement, so, unless we had parking.
All right. When we get to the courtyards, just reference the green space. All right, well, we're going to let you present for the eighth time or so. So I know you have a presentation. I don't know if you're just going to skip around like you did the other evening, or if you're going to go straight through, but the floor is yours.
A combination of both. Well, thank you for having me here tonight. Again, my name is Joe Muffler, is the representative from Mill Creek and Spectrum. We appreciate the planning commission having us here tonight for your feedback on this project throughout the last however many years you and collectively have been involved, along with the neighbors and residents of Falls Church who have been a part of this process throughout this journey. I'm joined by Antoinette Isherwood from Walter Phillips. I have brought this presentation, which, again, I will say, is a presentation many of you have seen before. I would like to provide updates, though, for your convenience and the residents' review of updates since that 7/16 planning commission hearing. It largely has to do with what was approved by the city council on August 13, as Gary was describing. So a lot of this does have to do with architecture, voluntary concessions, but as Mr. Vodisco asked, to show landscaping, I'm happy to. I have many slides in here. I've put together a presentation, but then I can skip around as well based on the needs. I've also brought some boards here, material boards. I believe they were distributed to you maybe individually as well, but I've got the larger boards here as well that you can see, to see the various, they're in the presentation as well. I'm happy to pull them out. So with that, I will dive in and happy to answer any questions as well. So as mentioned, there were many additions to the voluntary concessions throughout this process over the last few months. The ones that are in bold, as I go through here, are the ones that essentially changed in August, between August 6 and August 13. I'm not going to touch on every single one of these, because frankly, this is what's already been preserved in the VCs, but I hope it does show a commitment of the, you know, of the applicant and us to really work with the city to ensure that this project is mutually beneficial for everyone. So a lot of the ones you see here are tying the retail delivery to our residential delivery, and I will emphasize, again, as I have at every single meeting, Mill Creek and our investor partner will own this property in its entirety. We are not a residential developer, we are a mixed-use developer and owner, so the success of the retail is the success of the residential, too. They go hand-in-hand, so we're aligned with you all to make sure that this retail is delivered at its least, and it's least appropriately to the right tenants. You all have already heard many times about the affordable dwelling housing commitment. The mayor asked us to change the cash contribution essentially to an annual anniversary, where the city and the applicant can have an option to discuss converting the affordable dwelling units to regular units with cash contribution. Some clarification on language, somewhat semantic to tie it to the streetscape standards. One of the big ones that we'll touch on later is the pedestrian crosswalk, which we've talked about at every single meeting. We did...
And we will again.
Yes. We have arrived at an agreement that was preserved in the voluntary concessions with city council, with city staff, based on our meetings here and with neighbors, that essentially has allowed either Mill Creek installing that crosswalk or a cash contribution to the city in the amount of $25,000. This can be approved by the city manager at any point until after delivery of the project. So the plan is for staff, our engineers, the city's engineers, and the neighbors to continue to evaluate the safety and beneficiality of that crosswalk at a future date. And again, we can touch on that a little bit more. We've increased our commitment to solar panels, to electrical vehicle charging stations. We added $10,000 to our financial commitments to the city's stormwater fund. This was the request from the Tree Commission. Again, this is the language specifically about the crosswalk, where if we don't install the crosswalk, we've increased our traffic study to $75,000. If we do install the crosswalk, that contribution's $50,000. That's based on the fact that in our budget, we're carrying $15,000 for that crosswalk. That's what we believe it would cost to be installed with all the safety. So essentially, we've gone above and beyond that in the financial contribution, and it's not installed. And that's it. And the expiration of special exception is 12 months. Yes, ma'am?
Can we go back to the...
Yes.
...and the identity that's exchanged in the tax contribution?
To the, to the affordable living housing?
Yeah.
Essentially, it was on the 20th year anniversary of the certificate of occupancy, the owner could make a cash contribution to the city if the city staff agreed to it to convert the affordable dwelling units to market housing for a cash contribution to be determined at a later date. The mayor just asked for more flexibility and said, why are we waiting 20 years? What if we want to do that in year five? So we changed it to annual. Yeah, no, sorry, there's a lot to read, and I'm happy to touch on any of them that you'd like to. But those are the big ones that you all wouldn't have seen in July that were changed after working with city council. So here's a revised benefits package. The approval one was from two years ago. This is where we are today. And none of this would have changed as well. I didn't touch on it because I spoke on it last time, but we are going NGBS gold for the age-restricted building, as that was what we were amending in our special exception. So here are the big updates that if you've attended any of the other meetings, you would have seen already, but this was the elevation that was called, you know, the Haymarket Prison or any other number of things that, and this was a month ago, so before that, you know, you could have said it was even worse. We took that to heart, and you can imagine that at this stage in the game, changing a design dramatically is more turning a battleship than it is just pulling out in a racer. But this is where we stand today. So we've added living green screens on the floor, so about 20 feet of living green screens. It's now, whereas this was semintitious panel and some brick, this is now all brick and masonry. We've additionally created a tower element on the corner, provide for, you know, identification, so if you're coming west on Broad Street, you can know, hey, this is Founder's Row coming up. And I believe that it is much more aesthetically pleasing. From a brick perspective, it's hard to tell because of these renderings. You can kind of see it here, and you can see on these material boards, it's the variation color of the brick, so it's not just one brick color, and I'm not talking about the black and white or black and yellow. That yellow brick has brown, gray, you know, yellowish as well, so that you've got a pattern as you're driving down. It's just not one monolithic facade. That was obviously a request of everyone that we talked to, so we believe that it's, yeah, feel free to take a look, pass them around, they're just huge, and if we don't have a display for them. This is the West Broad elevation, which, again, from the last time we talked to you versus today, what was once semintitious is now brick. From a macro level, just to talk about, semintitious was something, semiticians and vinyl siding was something we were essentially instructed to get rid of as much as we possibly could. Vinyl's gone, semintitious is gone for the most part, except for up top along the cornices, where you're, you know, 70 feet off, 75 feet off the ground, and you can't be able to tell. But you'll see in the next picture that there's metal panel in prominent locations. One of the things that you can illustrate here, let me see if this mouse works, we broke up the facade, this was all, sorry, it's glitchy, but this was all, well, it just started, there, there, there we go. So this was all one continuous facade, as you can see, one continuous cornice, that's the old one. Hmm hmm hmm. Might have lost power on this thing?
Slow.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, there it is. So now you can see how we've broke it up, both horizontally and vertically. There's been changes to that cornice work, which was requested. This was the age-restricted corner, which we thought was a tremendous improvement over the hotel corner, but that white panel was semintitious, it is now metal panel. We've also improved the tower element, so again, it's more branding, it's more architecturally sound, or architecturally detailed than it was prior. Hotel on the left, this was before, this is now, again, metal panel. So metal panel was on all four sides of the age-restricted building, including here. Yes, and the metal panel's the one on the top. I think it's called Dur, it's the Sandstorm, Dorana.
Yeah.
So it is the metal panel. Here's a perspective from the market square as well, again, metal panel on the sides with the masonry. This was another element the ABS just to please play with, where you, again, you've got the very straight facade. I think this has come a really long way, Park Avenue, working with city and everything, and this is where it is today. So, I mean, you can tell how dramatically different that is as well. One of the questions we've received a lot of is, what is the perspective here if I'm standing essentially where this rendering is on Park Avenue? What can I see of the movie theater? Oh, that's going to be a slide a couple from now. Here's another angle from this perspective as well, where it was before, now with the broken-up cornice work on the Park Avenue townhomes. Here's the perspective coming down Northwest Street, and this has been a topic of discussion that I know I will talk about later, and I completely see both perspectives of this. We believe that this element is a crucial entryway to Founder's Row. You've got the entrance off of West Broad into the project, you've got the entrance off Northwest into the project, and then you can get into the parking garage. I say that because, you know, for people coming north from McLean, we've talked about this here, we've talked about this in other meetings, is making sure that there is signage, there's identification on this project. We think this is a key entry, and we think that tower element is a key way of advertising this community, promoting this community. It's something we feel pretty strongly about, and I know there are neighbors that also feel strongly that it shouldn't be there because it's high, it's 75 feet, 75 feet up. But as one of the two major entry points into this project, it is a signage opportunity. It's a key arterial for this...
Is there expectation that this would be lit?
No, it won't be lit.
So I think that's the big issue for people.
Correct. So we did talk about that. So we had a meeting with the neighbors on, two weeks ago, and we had that conversation as well, it will not be lit.
Yeah, and I don't know, I mean, you guys have just like kind of a placeholder in there, and I think that's part of the problem.
Correct.
We don't know what it's going to be.
Correct.
Yeah, anyway.
I can tell you, I can tell you right now, it won't...
A badly blown-up dollar bill.
It won't, it's going to be something refined, we're working through with street sense on it. It will likely be initials, FR, with some kind of, with some kind of branding sign. We're working on finalizing that now. It's not going to be a face, it's not going to be something gratuitous. That wouldn't be, we wouldn't do that.
We've admitted those old faces hanging in the council chamber.
I think it's fine, if it's just some type of initial type of logo, and it's not lit, I don't see how it would be a problem.
That's the kind of branding that we'd be seeking on this project. So here's the perspective I was mentioning in terms of, you're standing on Park, what can you see from that movie theater? Based on the cornice work, now, but this doesn't show, I guess, is where the cornice work jumps kind of up and down. You might be able to catch the top part of that movie theater, but for the most part, that perspective will be entirely blocked. Then it's stepped back even more with all of our air condensing units, all of our rooftop equipment centralized over the middle of this, which you won't be able to see unless you've got a drone or you're in a helicopter.
That's always a question.
We did some improvements here that are a little bit more subtle, but again, it's, we've broken up the cornice work, the tower, if you will, on the right was increased. So again, just, we did really what we could to break up this cornice work, since it was important, to change these main facades on Broad, on West and Broad, and at the corner by St. James. So the material boards are here to take a look at as well, but it is a largely mason project with your, obviously, your windows with the vinyl removed, semintitious largely confined to interior courtyards where you can't see it from the public. So these are the perspectives as well, where you can see what's involved in the project. That's the brick blend I was talking about in the middle on the bottom, where you've got a pattern. All right. Give me a second here. I see, is it reopening?
I don't have a mirror.
I apologize. Believe it or not, I'm almost done with the presentation outside of a couple question, oh, shoot. Of course.
Yeah, the switch didn't work.
Of course. This thing is not really working very well, I'm sorry. There we go. All right, so somewhere around here, sorry. So the brick, the cast stone, again, semintitious at the top with metal panel as well, different colored bricks throughout, so you are breaking up the facade throughout. So I think this is the last part, which is the crosswalk. So I think this is the last part, which is the crosswalk. So again, it is not Mill Creek's opinion that the crosswalk should be removed. I know a lot of things that are very small detail. Traffic improvements are not one of the things that I know more than at surface level. So what I do is I defer to experts. And from the get-go, our engineers and the city's engineers have both said that this is a very dangerous location for a crosswalk, that there are things you can do to improve the safety of it, but based on, you know, expert opinions, that there is nothing you can do to make it as safe as it should be. There is the potential for relocating it to... Sorry. So this is what we have in our site plan right now. We have it removed with you directing pedestrian traffic either north and west, or north and east to the crosswalk up at the top, or south to Broad Street.
What's been done to make that safer?
Nothing's been done now. The crosswalk has been removed to discourage people from crossing the street. The reality is, and this is the question we've gotten, and I'm happy to answer... This is the question we've gotten, is that people are going to cross...
They do now without a crosswalk.
And that's the thing. You can't stop people from crossing always. From crossing where they want to cross has been the opinion, and if you put a crosswalk there, it's going to encourage people to cross. And we don't believe that the safety standards, which is here, can be improved. You can pull out these trees, you can put in flashing lights, you can do striping, but ultimately, just based on the mid-block crossing with traffic coming around both of these corners, with turn lanes and all the different turning movements from Grove and West, that we don't believe it's a safe location. So we did propose this last time as an alternative, and perhaps there's others. I know some neighbors have come up to me and asked, "Well, why don't we shift it a little bit further south?" And that's why, at this stage, we'd like to explore this a little bit more. Frankly, this is an incredibly large project, so we want to make sure we get the details right. And so the way that the voluntary concessions are structured now is that we can continue to evaluate this essentially until delivery, at which point, if we don't install it, the city gets $25,000 additionally to be put to use to study all of the traffic impacts around... That's in addition to the $50,000 that we're committing if we install the crosswalk. So that's where we stand today, and I'm happy to discuss it any further. Antonette here can certainly discuss it from a more technical perspective, but we believe that that has at least satisfied the ability for us to start this and then continue to evaluate a little bit more sophisticatedly. The last thing I wanted to touch on was the timeline. Actually, I'll touch on the landscaping too, but the last thing I did want to touch on was the timeline. This is the timeline. If, and I don't mean to be presumptuous, but just for the purpose of the timeline, if there was to be a successful approval next week, we are prepared to be able to start construction on October 2018, following this timeline that we have put together since the get-go. I caution the neighbors and concerned residents and everyone that just because I say October 18th doesn't mean that you're going to see bulldozers out there anytime soon. In fact, it'll probably be three months before you see anything that you're like, "What the heck are these guys doing?" So there's a... But that is all included in this schedule. We would be starting our construction mobilizing, you know, within a couple of weeks of getting our final approval.
You're going to have a groundbreaking?
Sure. You know what? I don't like to... I'm way too superstitious to plan groundbreakings in advance, so I will work with the city staff to figure that out once we're successful on it all.
Get the shovel.
Yeah. So let me see about a couple of other things that I wasn't going to touch on right now, but I know there... I've received some emails, and I just had a question. So one of the concerns, one of the questions we had at the last meeting was shadow studies and showing shadows on the surrounding neighbors. What I didn't realize in the last one is the shadows on the neighboring properties was in that presentation I had two weeks ago. I just hadn't really studied it. So this is the summer solstice where the shadows don't really exceed outside of the property. So there's not much to see there. This is the fall and spring solstices where the shadows exceed a little bit to the west early in the morning and slightly across Park, slightly across Park in the mid-afternoon and evening, and that includes this tower element. In the winter, the shadows do exceed further to the, essentially to the pedestrian trail along West Street. They touch a little bit on the homes on Park. So that's the shadow studies. And again, this is the winter solstice, so this would be the darkest day of the year. So timing the day, sorry. I think that says 10:00 AM, 2:00 PM, noon. And that's for all threes.
Gray area shades.
The gray area shades. You can see, yeah, the gray area's interior shadows, and then the... Yeah, there you go.
That's the lowest angle of the year, correct.
Let me see if I can find the landscaping here. Why should not... So, cool. So you can kind of see it here. Find this mouse. This is our largest interior courtyard, which will be landscaped. We'll have bushes, we'll have planners. This is the pool. So there's hardscaping and landscaping. The hardscaping... I lost the mouse. The hardscaping essentially goes around the interior of this entire courtyard. This is a more heavily landscaped courtyard over here that has some hardscaping, the rest landscaping. This has landscaped, this corner roof has landscaping throughout it as well. Our public space and interior courtyard conforms to all the streetscape standards with landscaping around and interior to the property in addition to the landscaping that we're doing along the trail across here. One of the questions we have received is, what is this landscaping up here that's replacing the burning bush? We were requested by the tree commissioner, by the city staff, tree commissioner, if I have that title, the arborist for the city, to replace the burning bush as being an invasive species, and it's being replaced with Manhattan unimus shrubs, which will be installed at two feet at install, can grow to anywhere from five to eight feet, depending on pruning, and they're planted at 42 inches on center. And that's in addition to the black gum trees that are along this road as well. There's additional limited landscaping up here. We're relocating the trail as well.
Joe, before you leave that...
Yes, ma'am.
Something I never got around to asking, in the Market Square and everything, what is the situation with curbs?
So...
Is it all the festival street type of thing, like we have at George...
Are they flat throughout, though?
Through the Market Square.
Through the Market Square, they're flat. But north and... So essentially, what you see here, so south of it and north of it, this is flush all the way down here?
Yeah.
Okay, so north of it is not flush. This is flush to create an element of being able to continue the passage through.
It's like at Mad Fox, at Spectrum.
Correct.
Yeah. On the one side, right in front of Mad Fox.
Now I'll notice that every time I go.
We refer to it as the festival.
Well, it would be a differentiation in materials, because that's why it's flat, but you can tell what part is...
Right here, it's the same material. So the same material carries across right here. This, I believe, is a raised platform though for the cars. This is like a speed table right here, in the middle.
Yeah.
Right?
This is a poggia.
You think it's all flush? Okay. This material carries across, so that, like we talked about, is being able to... We can barricade this off for events essentially, so that people can turn around, they can drop off and turn around, but then all of this could be used as an event space. There are bollards throughout here, so it's not like it's just an open area where people would have no idea they're on the road all of a sudden, but we did want to create some kind of continuity.
And there's going to be different pace of pattern.
Since that's up there, could we ask questions about anything that's related to that?
Sure. I'm happy, yeah. Any question? That was essentially my presentation, so I have other slides, but I haven't taken any questions.
You just mentioned some drop-off areas, something that I've noticed that's been happening down on...
Yep.
100 block of Broad Street are the Ubers and Lyft, and, you know, just stopping up traffic here and there and everywhere. And so are there going to be drop-offs? I know you've got something for the theater, but are there any other drop-off areas? Because this is something that's now a big time deal.
Absolutely. So this right here is a drop-off area that was originally conceived of for the hotel, and, you know, we had the opportunity of putting this back to on-street parking, and instead, we said, "No, let's keep a drop-off area for that exact reason." We will likely work with Uber and Lyft to create a designated drop-off and pickup area, which is something you see down at the Wharf and other large mixed-use developments. I can't tell you that that's exactly what it'll... We'll work with them to try to establish that.
But it'd be better on the interior than on Broad.
Correct. Yeah, no, this is on the Founder's Avenue. This mouse keeps disappearing, I'm sorry. And then there will be the drop-off area in front of the movie theater as well, but this drop-off area provides an opportunity for Ubers and Lyft to pick up a drop-off without getting into like the Market Square area.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Of course.
I am sure we have lots of questions, or at least some questions.
Sure.
But before we go through that, I do want to turn it over to the public for their comments.
Yep.
And then, once we've heard their statements, then we will probably incorporate those into our questions in some way. So I'm now going to open this up to the public on this matter. And our first speaker was going to be Cynthia Wackerbarth. So the way this...
I'll just bring that to you.
All right.
Works. Thank you.
So the way this works for you and for everybody is, please state your name and your address, and then for these speakers, we have a three-minute time limit, so...
I won't be that long. I'm Cynthia Wackerbarth. I live at 304 Walnut Street. And so I came with concerns about the 100 trees that are going to be taken down and hoping to hear that there would be plenty of good trees planted. And I see that there's some, but I'm hoping for more. I also came hoping to hear there might be solar panels, and I heard, there was mention of solar panels, but I didn't quite catch it. But I think something is being done in that respect. I'm hoping. Also, I was thinking about the signage, and I'm glad that those lights are not going to be shining at night. I think that's a really good thing. And then my other concern is the sidewalk, and it was in slide 33, 34, and 35. So between Grove and Northwest Street, is there a sidewalk right beside the street? Because if there is, is it... I can't tell if that is. Okay, I think that's a dangerous place to have a sidewalk, because then you're going to have people with dogs and people with strollers. And for me, when I'm driving there, and I drive there every day, I really need to have my eye on the curb and the other cars. So for me, having the sidewalk there is not a good idea, and it should be behind whatever greenery, and I'm delighted to hear it's going to be native greenery, that it should be behind the greenery to not encourage people to be right beside the street. And those are my comments. Thank you for all you're doing. Okay. To whom do I give this?
Let's take notes, and then let's address them all at once.
Well, in my mind, that diagram does show there are trees between the sidewalks. There's a planting strip between the sidewalk and the road. There's trees and a planting strip.
Between the sidewalk and the road.
Right. There's a little...
Is that a laser plant? Okay. That's what's going on.
You want this?
No, no. I was...
You're welcome to borrow it.
Oh. Hot shot.
The sidewalk is this white part. This green part is some grass and some trees.
Thank you.
Right?
Mm-hmm. You're correct.
I think you've got people arguing with you.
Let me shut it here.
It's like a strip for the trees to be in.
I think that the issue may be that right now, there's those big bushes that are kind of here, and those will have to go away in order for this sidewalk to get in here.
And then little bushes.
And then they'll plant some new...
And I actually have the landscaping plan for that area, so I can show it, but I can do it later, whenever you guys want.
Sidewalk up against the curb is substantial. We don't need to...
Right, which is what it is over here.
That's what's going to...
That's what's right here. That sidewalk up to the curb.
Yeah. No, I want to address all the comments, because I think we're going to have a lot of similar comments, and if we can just address them at the end. All right, the next speaker is Keith Thurston. Let me add, if it's obvious like that, then she named the slide and everything. She took you right there, so we can answer those.
Thank you, Keith. It's Keith Thurston, 1015 Brook Street, and I'm speaking at the beginning for the Village Society. A letter was passed around that was sent just today. The first is on the issue of the crosswalk. The Board of the Village Society believes that there should be a crosswalk and that the warrants that have come forward in the past about traffic safety don't always represent common sense. And I'll give you an example. There's a number of cases around the city where the traffic warrants and engineers said cannot do it, but thankfully, the planning commission and the city council did do it to the best result. So the best one I can, most one that you can recognize as most easily is the crosswalk at the CVS store next to Staples, the West End. That's a four-way stop. Staffs significantly opposed that four-way stop because they said it was a private street, a public street yielding to a private street. That may be true, but that was a significantly dangerous situation in which the police would stand there two to three hours a day watching that crosswalk and wincing at all the near misses. So there's cases where you need to move forward where it makes sense. And on our letter, we make the point, if you don't have a crosswalk... Do you have the floor or not? If you don't have a crosswalk, people will still cross, and it'll be significantly more risky. It's shown on slide 35. We support the way that that crosswalk is put in, and because it's moved closer to Broad Street. A personal point, the crosswalks, when they're put in, they should not be skewed. That one appears skewed, and the one at Park Avenue also appears to be skewed. They should be 90 degrees from the curb on each side, and to put in more skewed sidewalk, crosswalks around the city is disrein... Just look at the one at Lee and Broad. The second issue we put on our letter was the... I'll skip down to the public art. We agree with the public art being continued as long as it's mandatory that it come back and that the public art doesn't slip away as not being addressed on the part of the building. The third is the burning bushes, and the board asks that the burning bushes remain as they are now. The reason is, there's been a long discussion for the last two months in the city based on alternative facts. These burning bushes are not invasive. People are citing the wrong cultivar. So if you go and you look up, the citation's right there. The state of Virginia has a different cultivar that's called the wing stem burning bush that is invasive. It's not the one being used. And you can see that because the row has been there for 40 years. There is no expansion. You don't see burning bushes growing up and down the trail. They haven't spread. And the website shows it. These are not the cultivar that's invasive. This cultivar is... Now, to talk about replacing it with log row and shrubs and trees misses the main point. The main point is the visual buffer for the trail and the adjacent neighborhood. So it's replacing something that's not requested. I looked at the plans last week on the site, and I think there's misinformation being I looked at the plans last week on the site, and I think there's misinformation being said about where the placement of that sidewalk to nowhere is. It is right up against the curb shown on the plan. Now, this slide might show it, that there's a green zone in there, but that's not what the plan showed. Now, the reason I call it the sidewalk to nowhere is because on the opposite end of that sidewalk, it connects up to nothing. There is no sidewalk from Steeplechase on further. So, what we're doing is taking out some land there, forcing in a sidewalk that could be distracting, and furthermore, carries you nowhere. Concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. James Morrison.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm James Morrison, representing the Steeple's Court Homeowners Association. I appeared here a few weeks ago. I appreciate having the opportunity to return again and to add a little bit to what I said then. We also appreciate the developer holding a town meeting a week or so back at the Community Center. We attended that. We did have some concerns growing out of the town hall meeting, which I wanted to mention. First, most of us felt we had an agreement to hold the height of the buildings facing Park Avenue at one story of retail and four stories of residential. The slide shown at the town hall meeting seemed to depict a one-story retail with five stories of residential, which raised the building height beyond what we thought we were going to be getting. It would be helpful to know when this design change was approved and by whom, if in fact that has happened. Secondly, at the meeting, we were concerned about the effect of the height change on the shadows and the buildings that the buildings would cast on nearby homes. That information was not available at the meeting, but as Joe said, he had it in his slide deck, and he did present it this evening. So, that begins to address that shade, that shadow problem. Also, at the meeting, Mr. Muffler stated that West Street would not be widened near the project, and that an additional lane would not be added. I think that may have been a mistake. I believe this issue was set a long time ago, and that there's an additional northbound lane added to West adjacent to development to reduce congestion. But this may have just been a mistake in the answer. We feel that due to the impending work on West Street, we would urge the City Public Works Department to resolve a decades-old problem of flooding underneath and across West Street about a half block north of development. There's a storm water pipe passing under the street there that is too small for the volume of storm water it receives during heavy rains. The water backs up. It floods West Street itself and as well as nearby yards. At times, the backed-up water reaches the thresholds of homes on Lincoln Street and Steeple's Court. The fix for this problem is said to be on the city's storm water improvement agenda. But the ideal time to do it would be when the traffic is already curtailed or even blocked on West Street due to the road construction near Founder's Row. We would also reiterate the points we have made previously to the commission. Please be sure that proper attention is given to the safety of the intersections adjacent to development where pedestrians, bicycles, and cars are all crossing West Street. Those of us who live around here, live in this area, see the near misses there all the time because it's very unsafe there. Please paint markings on West Street so as to prevent traffic from blocking Steeple's Court. West is the only way we can enter and exit our street, and if you add a couple hundred extra cars a day, we're going to be in a much difficult, a fairly difficult situation. Please work with us on restricting parking on our street. I've talked to people with the Planning Commission about that. We have very few spaces now in West, and our street is a half a block from the development site. And the shrubbery was just mentioned, and I'm glad that the speaker from Village Improvement Society mentioned that it is basically a buffer. That's the most important thing about it. It's a buffer, most of all, between the high rises and the development and the low-rise residential areas beyond it, and we'd really like to see that maintained. So, those are the points I wanted to make, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here again.
Thank you. Dave. He had to leave. Okay. Because I couldn't pronounce his last name anyway. Yeah. Okay. All right, I'm going to skip. She's, I think she's on here. She can have a few extra minutes, but try to keep it reasonable. This is the whole point of this meeting, is so we can hear your views, so I'm not going to be militant about the three minutes, but please try to be respectful. But Lisa, you're up.
I don't even know why I have to announce myself, but here we go.
It was a first-name basis.
I know. All y'all, first name. Most of y'all. I hope you had an opportunity to read the comments I sent via email and that were included in the packages distributed to you last week. In that email, I provide the reasoning behind each request I submitted. Tonight, I just want to restate what I believe will make this project better for the surrounding neighbors. And if I can, can I have you pull up Slide 24, please? Thank you. I'm going to back Jim up on this. My understanding was, or all of our understanding, we fought long and hard, many years, that in the January 2016, when this plan, when this project was approved, the building to the right of that tower was supposed to be four stories over one. So, it was all the buildings facing West Street and facing the Jennifer Lane. The drawing now shows it being five stories over one, which means we've added an extra level, and we don't know why. Where did that come from? When was that approved? If it's 2016, it was four over one. So, that would be my first point. The second one is, I can't stand that logo tower. I am a residential neighborhood, as are the people behind me and the people that I'm representing. We don't need to have a logo there coming from our homes to say, "This is Founder's Row." You're going to be coming in from Mick Lane or Arlington. You're going to see this big development. You're going to know it's Founder's Row. What else is there in that area, other than residential homes? I agree that we need a crosswalk from the intersection of Grove Avenue and West Street to Founder's Row. People cross there now. There is a park across the street from there, and people, young children, parents with young children, skateboarders will all be rushing over to Founder's Row to use fast casuals. You need something that's going to identify, that's a chance for pedestrians to be here. They have offered to put in something that has little flashing lights. Identify it. I want to make sure the rooftop mechanicals will be in the center of each rooftop and not visible from up to a block away, as is the case at the North Gate, the Spectrum and the Reed Building. They can do it. Founder's Row can too. Additional green space. We are creating a heat island in the heart of our residential neighborhood. There needs to be more green space to take away from that. The plantings that have been proposed, we're only going to grow five to eight feet, whereas the burning bushes that are currently are 12 to 15 feet, that is not a substantial replacement bush. You need something taller and wider than what's being offered. I also want to back up Jim and say that we need street markings, not only at Steeple's Court, but also at Grove Avenue. That's a very busy intersection. It's going to get busier with the addition of additional residents and retail. We need do-not-block-the-box markings at that intersection as well. I want a writing and commit, I want a commitment in writing from Founder's Row that the west, that the shovel that goes between Founder's Row and the West Falls Church Metro will travel along Route 7 and Haycock Road and not down Highland Street or Grove Avenue, which are the most direct points. Again, those are residential. They are not meant for commercial traffic. I'd like to see a tentative schedule of the proposed quarterly construction update, problem resolution meetings that they have offered, which I certainly appreciate the offering. But I'd like to have a general schedule so people can work around those. I want confirmation on the off-site parking arrangements prior to groundbreaking, which has been mentioned. They're going to build a parking lot on the site, but once that site has to be built up, where are they going to park after that? And verify the staging and offloading of construction vehicles when that onsite parking ground is being built up. Where are they going to stage and offload them? That's it for me tonight. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Laura Gogol. Clock is running.
I don't know why Lisa thinks it's going to take so long. I shared my letter with her, and I sent it, I sent it at lunchtime, but I'm sorry, apparently it wasn't, I know that it was still late in coming in, and so I will just try to summarize the remarks, but you have the letter that you can look at as you go on. I think, really, my letter raises, oh, I'm Laura Gogol, 308 Pine Street, and thank you so much for being willing to listen to all of us. We appreciate how hard you all worked to solve these problems. But I, I think, really, I started off my letter by just explaining to me, you know, I've lived here for 23 years now. This street, Park Avenue, has a lot of sentimental value to me. You know, it's like the Memorial Day parade. It's just, you know, there's not a lot of change. And I just think it's important to maintain the integrity of the neighborhoods around there. All right? So, I think this developer is getting a very rare opportunity to develop, probably, you know, probably a part of Falls Church, you know, that's going to be forever changed, and, and it's going to really make a statement, like you said, coming from this end, you know, the strip mall, Falls Plaza is not going to make a statement. This is going to make a statement. And I think we wanted to portray as well, and I know there's been a lot of attention given to the architectural appearance of it. I think we were very concerned as neighbors about the height and the fact that we felt like, okay, on Broad Street, being tall is okay, but on Park Avenue, our little Park Avenue, that's supposed to be like the Village of Falls Church with the big trees and St. James, having a huge tall building there didn't make sense. And so, we fought really hard about that, and I, and I do feel that what's here now is not really keeping the spirit of what we thought we understood. These drawings didn't be, weren't presented until the summer. You know, the original proposal was, was approved, and these drawings weren't submitted until, you know, probably, I don't know when it, when it would have been, if it was in July or August, when these, when were these drawings actually presented, the new updates? But, but, so this is really our first opportunity. I don't think they were, I don't think they got the scrutiny that the first round did, because everybody this time was just looking at swapping out the hotel. So, nobody was looking at what changed about the drawings very much. They were looking mostly at sort of, is there a difference between the hotel and the age restricted apartments? So, I guess one of the things that I'm most concerned about is this tower, because I think you can get a, you can have a tower feature without adding that height. The only reason the height is there is to provide space for their logo, which we don't need. I sent just now to the Planning Commission a picture of the Kensington. They have a similar tower feature, but their tower doesn't have the added height, and it just has sort of this tasteful little, like, metal, like, K, big K on it. And so, I don't think you need an extra story just to put a huge logo there facing a residential neighborhood. And I really don't think we should let them go add, add the height there. It's not needed. And it's, and it, and it creates, I think it violates the understanding that we as neighbors had, and I think sort of what the City Council approved. The second thing that I really wanted to, to talk about is the landscaping and the buffering. And I agree, I'm not sure, are we, are we bound by this decision? There's somebody on city staff decided these bushes have to go, and so we just all have to do that? I mean, or do we have any ability to, to say something back and say, you know what? These aren't invasive. We don't want to get rid of them. We think they should be maintained. So, I hope, I hope there's an ability to look again at the burning bushes, because I think what's being proposed now is not going to provide enough of a buffer for what we as residential neighborhoods want. You saw the shadow studies, I mean, and you saw the perspective, one of the slides that show the perspective of the, the view from the street. But both, the shadow studies and the view from the street. No, well, that's one of them. But that one, I mean, so those are the houses. That's the development. You can see this, just the immense change this is going to bring. And to have, you know, any ability to sort of say, look, this is a busy commercial area, and we're going to have some, some clear buffering and transition to the single-family home neighborhoods that are around it that want to preserve our character and not be overrun by a commercial development. I think it's just really important that we do that, and I don't know, my understanding is that, once the site plan is approved, anything that's not nailed down in the site plan doesn't have to be done by the developer at that point, you know? So, anything we really think is important, obviously, I'm asking you guys to help try to nail down those things that really are important, that right now seem a little squishy. It would just be really helpful to have more of that stuff nailed down, in particular, this height issue and resolving that. I think if you look at the picture of the Kensington's tower, it would be, and even if you look at, can you look at the first slide that you showed, just the opening slide? That, that one there, I mean, so there's no logo at the top of that tower, even though that is apparently even a more public entrance than the one on the backside. And I wonder, it sounded like there was something that I didn't really understand about a waiver they're asking for, so that they can have a commercial entrance within a certain closer distance to a R1 district. And I wonder if part of that is, you know, it isn't appropriate to have such commercial stuff going on that close to an R1 district. And so, I wonder, you know, part of that, to me, that's sort of another indication that logos and things that are really commercial don't belong thus close to a residential neighborhood. So, I'm hoping that you guys can, can, can help figure out a solution to that, to keeping the height where it belongs and saying that we can't do a logo like that on this residential side of the project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mark Massey.
Thank you for letting me say my two cents. I think I could sum it all up pretty strongly by saying ditto, ditto. And I'm pretty sure that there are whole neighborhoods out there that feel very strongly about the issues that my first two, the former two speakers have brought up. For me, I'm going out my front door, because I live at 203 Grove Avenue, and there's now going to be a mass where there was no space. It's horrible. No way around it. It's what's happened. The idea of further offending us by shoving a logo into what is a, a neighborhood of people, not a business neighborhood, is really offensive. It's wrong. It's just plain wrong. You know, like I said, ditto. There's so many points now that we have to depend upon you guys to nail down and ensure that, shall we say, the commercial aspect of this does not overwhelm what we have left of the residential neighborhood area. Because, again, this is residential, this is residential, this is residential. This beast is, in effect, attacking the residential character of the neighborhood. This whole, the, the neighborhood around us has been working for years with the developer to try and make it a reasonable thing. Due to personal property rights, we can't stop it. We've tried. So, we really have to get reasonable here about the impact on the neighborhood, and we have to do everything we can to minimize that impact. Thank you.
Thank you. As the last speaker's slip, I have Rohini. I think everybody spoke, so I don't need to say if you want to speak now, now's the time, but I think you're last.
Thank you. I didn't mean to be last, but...
You get the final word.
No, there's always next week.
There is always next week.
Rohini Winters, 324 Grove Avenue. Thank you for having this opportunity to speak and to hear from the public. One of the things that we talk about in the military is mission creep, and what I have detected over the last couple of months of sitting on different meetings is that we seem to be creeping up with our impervious surfaces. We are allowing this project, that's supposedly an exemplary project worthy of a special exception, to zoning ordinances and to height restrictions in, in our little city, to also allow artificial turf, the removal of a landscape island in the middle of Broad Street, just after the nice sign that says Tree City, USA, as you come into the, to the West End, removal of the burning bushes under some pretense that those are invasive plants, replacing them with some other bush that I personally don't find nearly as attractive, and certainly not of the size and proportion that we need there to serve as the buffer. A taller building on Park Avenue than was ever envisioned as the project was approved, which will allow icy conditions to be prolonged on the WOD trail and are those residents on Park due to the height, and the shadow study is showing that. And I think we need to be really, really careful, because you are the Planning Commission that has the final say, not us, on the site plans. And that sidewalk comment that was made, that the sidewalk isn't against the street, you all need to study the site plans, because once upon a time, we were told that, oh, we don't know what's on West Street facing the WOD trail. That's just building facade, when it was a back alley building, loading dock, and trash zone. And that's all we were going to get if we didn't pay attention to the site plan. And that was, that was, like, scary bad. So, now, after a couple, three years have gone by, we have a much nicer project, but we still have wrongdoing by this developer by raising the height on the backside in front of our homes, putting a logo up where it really doesn't belong. I second Laura's comment, removing trees and not replacing with enough greenscape in this project for a tree city like ours. I sometimes wish I had more sunlight in my own yard to plant vegetables and grow grass properly, but we love our trees, and the tree canopy does a lot for our human condition. So, when you can't build trees with deep roots over a parking garage, you need to make sure you're not ripping out other treescape and landscape and greenery. We almost had it happen in front of City Hall. The developer, the project planner, civil engineer, who I'm sure we pay nice money to, was going to replace the planters with smaller planters... to replace the planters with smaller planters, less trees in favor of a concrete ramp. Thankfully, thankfully, you called it and said, move the parking, but don't replace the planters and worry us about where to put the recycling bins. So we kept the planters and, you know, hopefully all the plant elements. And it was a no cost to the city. That's how it was sold to us. Why? Because they were going to take money they would spend on plant material and put it in concrete. And our residents need to know that that's what our developers would have us do. And you all are volunteers, most of you, and I appreciate it. And I think we all need to be paying attention and speaking up. And so that's why I keep coming before you and I appreciate you keep listening and working with us. And I still want a nice crosswalk to that pedestrian lane because I want to walk to Founder's Row. Oh, and before I forget, the 10-acre project up the road, they're advertising an outdoor theater and a spray park. Don't let them steal customers from this project to go to theirs. Make them do something new and exemplary if they want the height bonus. Thank you.
She's on your side, apparently.
I was about to say, thank you.
Notwithstanding the first three minutes, the last 10 seconds, she's with you. All right. Well, that concludes the speakers. Your comments are really important to us. We've been listening for the last several years. We're going to continue to listen. The whole point of structuring the meetings the way we have this evening, typically this is a work session, we don't open it to the public, but on something this important, what we decided to do is to give you a chance to make the comments now before we take action as opposed to just make the comments and us take action immediately. I like the way we structured this. This gives a chance for us to speak to the developer, bring up our comments, and then you have, you know, at least some small amount of time to make whatever adjustments you can or cannot make. So thank you for your comments. We have certainly heard them. We've gotten the, I've read the letters, I'm sure everybody else has. And you've been a very consistent voice for the last several years. I'm going to turn it over to the commissioners to ask, I think, well, before I do that, actually, why don't you address your notes? Because I think that'll just...
Could I address the burning bush thing really quick, though? Because that seemed to be a recurrent thing.
You're, you want to address it with another question, or you want to say your opinion about it?
No, I want to explain the reason why the city wants to replace them with natives.
Sure, go ahead.
I just want to say, so as Keith Thurston pointed out, these are Chinese bushes, the burning bushes, but they are a cultivar that is not as invasive as other versions, other hybrids. But the reason we don't want to put back in another, this type of burning bush is that we're promoting, then we're promoting a non-native bush. And you can't be clear, if someone sees that bush and they go and get, decide to get a burning bush, we don't know if they'll get the non-invasive one or the invasive one. And regardless, it's not a native bush. And as a city, we have made a goal to mostly put natives in. And the only place we put non-natives in are like at Cherry Hill Farmhouse, because we tend to want to put, we put Victorian-era plants in there that are non-natives because of the historical significance of those plants for it. So we could put in a larger native bush there, but we're definitely, as a city, we promote natives over non-natives. And so that is why they don't want to put back the burning bushes. And as someone who works very many weekends on our Habitat Restoration Team for 14 years, pulling invasives out of our parks that came mostly out of people's yards, we want to do whatever we can to get people not to go and pick out a bush from China over a bush that's native to our area. And so I just want to point that out. And the reason the bushes were being removed is because construction of the sidewalk is probably going to cut their roots off. So they're going to have to be replaced regardless.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. All right. So I have several notes here. So let's, I'm going to read what I think I'd like you to address, based on the comments, and then you tell me if I missed something or...
Sounds good. And I've got files like I'm doing here. I've got files elsewhere that I can pull up as well.
The crosswalk comment came up. I'm not sure you need to address that since I think you actually have. I think everyone had comments about it, but I don't think you need to address the crosswalk part of it. If you could address the bushes, that would be great. The construction phasing and traffic control, how that's supposed to work, please address the logo tower. I believe you, well, address the mechanical components and where they're going to be located on the roof. I think you've addressed the shadow study at this point, by showing it. I don't know what there is to say else about it, other than the logo tower related to that. The issue for the parking for the neighborhoods, I don't believe is your issue. That is for the city. I have the, this is my own question, never mind. Then they have the green slash open space in terms of, you know, it's not a percentage, I hear that, but just what the plan is and how we're going to address, you know, generally the number of trees that we're removing.
Okay.
The shuttle routing.
Okay.
And then solar panels. That is what I have on my list. If I miss one, yeah.
The extra floor that was added.
Yeah, okay. So the one, the one to four to now one to five ratio.
Yeah, and I think we need to specifically point it out because most of what's on Park is four stories.
All right. We can ask questions. This was just the list I think that he, I heard from the public and I wanted him to address. This doesn't mean we can't ask other questions. Do you have one I...
I'm going to ask you about that.
I'll try to be efficient, and I have some other notes, too, that I'll try to touch on, just to make sure we hit on everything that people have asked. So why don't we start with landscaping, since that's the plan I have open right now, since there were quite a few concerns? So Ms. Tietz did a fine job of, a great job of explaining the burning bush replacement. Frankly, that is coming, like I said, from the city arborists, from the commissions that we're meeting with. You know, we're trying to put in a shrub that will eventually grow, that will look nice along that thoroughfare. Do note, do recognize that, again, if we're talking about this intersection, we do have the, however many trees this is, six, I believe, six-ish or so, black gum trees that are going to be going along a landscaping strip, then the sidewalk, then the burning bushes. So there is landscaping this area, and there's landscaping that is protective of the sidewalk that will eventually take you up to the northwest street crossings. So if you want to clarify that.
Green planting area, sidewalk, burning bushes.
Perfect.
Manhattan.
Manhattans, yeah, they're Manhattans. Those are Manhattans, not burning bushes now. So that was, that was about the landscape buffer. Number of trees you can see on this plan, where we have the trees staggered throughout the site.
Well, hold on, hold on, before we move off that. So we have bushes here currently, and I understand it's coming from the city. Why are we removing them in the first place? I think I know the answer, but I'd like to hear what you have to say.
It's my understanding that it has to do with the construction, the reconstruction of the trail, the installation of the sidewalk, the installation of the new landscaping strip. All of that would interfere with the existing bushes. So they need to be removed in order for us to do the improvements on this side of the road. Undergrounding the utility lines, all of this in concert means that we have to replace the landscaping that's on that strip.
Okay. And so you need, I'm just trying to summarize it, really. You need to remove it for your construction purposes or the construction purposes, the improvements that you're providing. But what you're planning there, you don't have a strong opinion. It's the city and the arborist who is dictating that part of the decision.
It is.
Okay, that's good.
While we're on that, we often have a discussion about tree beds. I just thought I'd ask, flat or raised?
That was Andy's question, you know.
That was Andy's? I'm sorry.
He has that one reserved.
I upstaged them.
Are you asking about the north, the northwest street is a planting strip? It is not going to be the West Broad Street.
And if any of you steal Tim's environmental question, I'm going to be annoyed.
But anywhere along the sidewalks, on even the south side, those are all...
Flush beds or raised?
Flush.
All flush.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that segues into the street trees that we're talking about. We are clearly removing trees from the site, but we are replacing trees in here, or rather installing, planting new trees in accordance with the city streetscape standards, as has been a part of our site plan review from the get-go to ensure that we're in conformance with the standards set by the city for new trees. And you can see they go around the perimeter of the site, got them over here where possible, although actually, I don't think those are trees, I think those are larger shrubs because of the storm pipe. But all along Broad, West Street, and even internal of the site, we do have trees. So sorry, it's going to take me a second just to look down and...
Yeah, and I think if I could just jump in, this plan doesn't show the green spaces in the courtyards, which we'll also have.
Correct, correct.
So right where the mouse is, I try to do a rough estimate calculation from the landscape plan, there's an additional like 1,800 square feet of planting in that large courtyard.
And it's on like the second floor. It's not ground level. It's on the roof, it's on the roof of the retail, essentially. So there's one courtyard here, there's one courtyard here.
And that one to the right is going to have some green roof as well as the one that's on Northwest Street.
And to be clear, it's not synthetic, like in the market square.
So that was my next point. The only place where there's synthetic turf is at the pet spa for, at the pet run, so that we can drain that appropriately. And then I believe there might be a strip of artificial turf on the rooftop deck of the age-restricted building where there's just a little outdoor area. But the landscape areas, the official landscape areas are not synthetic.
Excuse me, didn't you have that in Market Square, right around?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. That's a great point. This is a turf lawn as well for families. And that's strictly a maintenance thing, given the high level of foot traffic there. Yeah, it's a mud pit.
It would be a mud pit.
And the water, because the water is in there.
Thanks to the water, yeah. Okay, I just thought.
Yeah, no, that was a great point. Thank you for catching that.
That was identified, that was clearly identified.
Let me see what else there is. So, yeah, really from a public-facing perspective, that's the only artificial turf is in there, and that's for maintenance purposes. I believe that's it from a landscaping perspective. There was a question regarding our solar panel commitment.
Well, hold on, let's just do this in an organized way then. Does anybody else have a question about landscaping, since we're dealing with that issue? Instead of like just, everybody just shooting out their, all of their issues, let's just, if we go one by one, that might make more sense. Yeah, crosswalk is its own independent conversation, not landscaping. Okay.
Yeah, with crosswalk sidewalk.
Yeah, okay. Landscaping check. I mean, you've addressed.
Landscaping check. All right. So let me pull up the architecture. Make sure I got the right file here. It's this one, sorry.
Which one are you going to, what topic?
I was going to go to the tower slash height of the Park Avenue.
Yes.
All right, so let me try to zoom in as much as possible. So this is the Park Avenue elevation. And I do want to preface this by saying, you know, while I feel strongly and while we've had very positive reception from some people about the logo and how important it is to be there, from people associated with the city and residents, I sincerely appreciate the passion and commitment and communication we've had from the neighborhood as well on this issue. I know we've worked very hard with the city and with them to improve the facades along Park and the townhomes, you know, once upon a time taking a level off of this residential, which while we're on that topic, this level of residential that's facing Park and curving on the west remains at four stories over one story of retail. The five-story element is on the bridge component. This has always been a five-story element. This has recessed about 90 feet from the corner of Weston Park. That is the five-story element. So in 2D, it looks like it's right there. It's recessed 90 feet. This is a 75-foot tall element. It is essentially 11 feet above the ceiling of the residential unit right here, and that's where we have created this. This has been included in our site plan, I believe, since the February submission, as we've gone through the, I mean, the reality is the architecture on this project has changed throughout these last couple submissions and couple months with feedback from staff and boards and everyone else. So I do believe that's it from my trying to respond to those questions.
Okay. I have some comments, but let me ask you guys if you have any comments you want to make about the tower, logo, and the massing, the one over four. Yeah, let's, I want to hear about the logo. This is a...
I'm a neighbor there. I think, I kind of think there's a precedent to that on the other side. I think the biggest challenge of all of Park Avenue, of all of these projects, is always going to be a really sharp edge, from very dense to low density as you can be in this little, little venture, you know, I want to mostly on that. And it's always a difficult transition. And I think this probably is kind of a long way in the respect of the way it treats the Park Avenue franchise. But I will tend to agree with some of the comments that we made, that a logo that faces north...
The mic situation's changed like eight times over the last three months. I apologize. So I tend to agree with some of the concerns that have been raised regarding having a commercial element and a logo. I know it's a mixed-use project, in fact, it's more residential than commercial. But I agree that a logo, you know, is something that, that element is signage, and I think signage facing the Park Avenue side will be visible heading up West Street. I think that is a change. I don't know if the other projects along that have Park Avenue frontage have a logo that's visible like that. I mean, I know for my house, you know, on the top level, I can see signage from the Hilton, but, you know, that's, you know, that's just because of the angle I'm at, and that's really oriented towards, oriented towards seven. Although, although the fact that it's illuminated is, you know, I don't, I don't love it, but it's oriented towards, towards Leesburg Pike, towards Broad Street. And so this is different. And so I tend to agree, even if it's, you know, just initials, you know, I have concerns about that. I think that's a departure from other projects that have been approved. And I think, you know, I'm trying to think of the other side of town, at, you know, the Harris Teeter project, I don't think there's any signage that faces Winter Hill of any kind. And so I tend to agree. I mean, I understand people will be coming from different directions, but I think you have to respect the fact that for many, many, many blocks and maybe miles in that direction, it's exclusively low-density, single-family residential. And, you know, I'm sensitive to that. So that's my two cents.
Anybody else want to weigh in on the logo?
Yeah, I agree. There isn't anything else like that along Park. I think, I didn't even see any logo on the Broad Street side.
There's signage, there's signage, there's a blatant, there's a blatant sign on that.
But I think that's all that's necessary. I do not think you need a logo. You know, I know, I know that, you know, you'd have to do something if you're dealing with that fifth floor there. But I do not like the idea of, I don't see the sense of it. And you mentioned McLean. Well, if they're coming from McLean, they come, it doesn't matter to me. I just don't think, I don't think you need it.
From the plans, it looked to me like it's not really facing Park, it's really facing West, as West comes into it.
Say that again.
It's not really facing Park, is it? Isn't it facing West?
It's where it curves, it's where it curves.
Like, I felt like if you were on Park and you came back even a few feet back, you wouldn't even see it.
Oh, shoot, what did I just do? Sorry, give me a second. I was trying to pull up the site plan.
Because if it's just facing down West Street, I can kind of make the sense, because that's a major road into the city. But I was just...
Here you go, so it's right here.
Yeah, it's, to me, it's more, it's not really facing Park, it's really facing West.
It's really facing Grove.
Well, no, Grove's down here.
Oh, down there?
That's West.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So to me, I thought the location was fairly good because a lot, that's, West is considered a major secondary road. A lot of traffic comes into the city on West. And I think that if you're in, on Park, even one house in, you're not really going to see it, especially if it's not lit or anything. But anyway, I mean, I don't think it has to be there, but I don't, I really don't think it's facing Park.
Is the concept with the logo that for people driving up West Street that aren't from this area, that they need to have some way to identify that that's an entrance?
Yes.
Is it, would it be more visible if it were lower, in terms of people just, you know, car vision?
There is potential for it. And what I'm, what I'm looking at now in the plans with Antinet is, we are utilizing a portion of that tower for this pet run that we talked about. It's recessed back from the roof, obviously, because you're not going to have pets on the edge of the roof. But we are utilizing a portion of that sp- the roof, but we are utilizing a portion of that space, I believe, for the pet area. So, it has been slightly amenitized as well. Yeah, so, it has been slightly amenitized, it was something that, again, I understand the neighborhood concern, we were pushed from the early stage to identify this project, to create focal points for this project. We essentially have two major entrances to this project, maybe you don't, Dean is his mayor, but Founder's Avenue is obviously, you know, that's the major thoroughfare inside. So, we've worked hard and treated it as something, again, that's not gonna be a man's face, that's not gonna be lit up at night, that is something that, for an eleven, an extra eleven feet, identifies the project, we've amenitized it to create something for this community, and that's how we're taking feedback.
But if the logo was not there, that wouldn't, that tower would not be there?
Sure.
Well, it would, it would...
If the logo was just invisible...
Well, to clarify, it sounds like, I mean, I'm not trying to suggest this, but it sounds like you're saying, hey, you guys wanted this space, we made a space, and then we put this thing up here with the logo, and then we put the doggy poop area behind it, but now, if, it sounds like you need that doggy poop area, so...
I mean, it's an amen, it goes, now, I'm, 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 I'm confused on this.
Like, from my perspective, I think you built it like this, no one's ever really gonna think about it, but I totally respect the opinion of people who live there, you know, having a logo way up at the top of the building, all you're doing is advertising to people who live over there. If you're driving down Park, having something right here is gonna be way more visible than anything up there anyway, so, to me, it's a little, it's a little disingenuous to me to suggest that that is somehow important to people, knowing that this giant thing in front of them is a place they might wanna stop.
I mean, I understand, I understand.
But if you're blocking the dog run, then that's a reason for it to be that tall, but...
He's a doggy's little shelter.
Right?
Yeah, well, does anyone else wanna speak on it?
I'll be frank, I need to confirm that the dog run is there, I don't, and I sincerely apologize, I'm either having a brain fart and can't process it right now, but the real element was initially for the identification of the project, and for an architectural detail that was pushed for us, for, through various people, and we were, I've been asked to, you know, I understand the perspectives here, so I need to...
Yeah, look, I can see, I can see both ways.
Exactly.
You're putting hundreds of millions of dollars into this project, and you wanna advertise that, you know, your product. However, I think that this is a eleven-feet that need not be there for a logo, that the goal of advertising your product and your development, Mr. Stevens had already one idea, I should think, is excellent in terms of if people are, if the idea is to say, this is Founder's Row, that there can be other solutions, I don't know about this dog run or whatever, at this stage, but that the objective, my objective would not be to prevent you from advertising your investment in your product, but that we've come so far, you've worked with this neighborhood at all these levels, we've made all these changes, and then to add an eleven-feet for a logo sign seems like just unnecessary, not because of your objective, but just the way that you're achieving that objective. And I think that, as Mr. Rankin said, that advertising's providing nothing for the people who are in the neighborhood, so they can look up and see what's right by them. If it's to advertise to people coming by, I think there's other ways to do it. You have a blade sign on the other side, a blade sign's not eleven feet higher, you have missed a logo opportunity as it relates to Route Seven and West, when you showed us that rendering where the senior housing is, I don't know why there's not a logo there, that means way more visible than this. I would definitely like to see this revisited, not to say no logo, but just, I just don't think you need the extra shadows, I don't think you need the extra height, I just think there are other solutions to your objective than something that's upsetting the neighbors the way it is, and just frankly unnecessary.
And I'll be frank with you, if, we need to go back and reassess the utility of that rooftop space, and that's on me for not doing this, because I knew this issue was gonna come up, and I feel bad that I didn't do that. We don't mean for this to be self-aggrandizing and to be offensive to the community. Again, we have conversations with various boards, commissions, and people, this was resulted that, we'll have a response next Monday on the tower, because I do agree with you and the neighbors, there are additional ways to logify and advertise for the community.
Yeah, it's...
I'm just thinking architecturally, though, if you remove that...
It'd be out of balance.
We will have to reassess the architecture on that.
That might look kind of odd.
Again, it's not necessarily...
No, it doesn't need the logo, but the tower itself kinda balances the bridge.
Well, no, not necessarily, remember, because the bridge is recessed ninety feet from here.
Really, so, but that looks, the tower looks like it's recessed too.
So, you could maybe put it like right here, you put it in...
Bring up the 3D rendering, you can see it better.
The 3D logo honestly doesn't do a...
No, I know, but I'm saying, but I'm saying the rendering...
I just wanna make sure, if we did remove it, it looks right.
If you bring the rendering, you can see that it's, the fact that it's recessed.
Yeah, you can.
That's where the logo goes on that picture, honestly, I don't know.
That one. Right, you can see now that you don't need it to balance the bridge.
Oh, no, you don't, okay.
Yeah, it's...
There's no have to be like a line with one behind it a little bit, but...
Looking at the way it works. Guys, I'll tell, I promise you I will take a look at this and reassess, because I hear the passion. Looking at this, there's no dog run up there, which was my initial inclination, and now I'm questioning myself, because I've gone down the rabbit hole, so...
The dog hole.
So, you could bring it down some.
Alright, so, can I just say one last thing on, or no, I can say whatever, more you want on this, if you guys need to.
Time!
Yeah, but the only thing I can say is that next week, I will work with my architect as hard as I can to get some kind of revision in like maybe the 2D elevation, but I don't think we're gonna be able to revise this elevation by next Monday. I can try, that'll be my assessment, but I can make a commitment that we can certainly preserve in the site plan to what we do with this tower.
Okay, I'd like, this is a big deal to the community.
Sure.
And the objective is not to prevent you from advertising from this direction, I do not think this needs to be the solution to your advertising objective. Okay, let's move on to the next one. What do you wanna address next?
Um...
Wanna pick off some easy ones?
Yeah, why don't you pick off some easy ones, now that I'm sweating.
Yeah, let's go with the mechanical components, where are they gonna be located?
Mechanical components will be located along corridors.
Behind the logo?
Yeah, right? Yeah, now, they're gonna be, no, sorry, that was the mechanical shed. Let me see if I can find a floor plan. I don't even think I have a roof plan, but you can at least see where they'll be in concept.
It's made from the beginning, it'll be in the middle.
So, if you see where the corridors are, one, we don't want them to be seen from the street, we have no incentive to be putting ugly rooftop condensing units on the street. They need to be located along corridors, just based on the walls, so right here, you're already recessing them forty-five feet, but they'll be contained around the interior of the project, likely not above the theater roof, just because of the acoustics on that, on the theater roof, but they'll be located to the interiors of these projects where there's, there's just no way you can see them from street level.
It didn't appear that there was very big parapets at all.
It's not even a matter of a parapet, it's just a matter of a site angle, though, to be able to go far that back, forty-five feet, fifty feet onto the rooftop from ground level?
But, I mean, you don't have them, because your plan is to put them in the middle? Is that why we don't have big parapets, or did I miss that from the massing?
We have cornices, we have, you know, some different tower elements, but the, I couldn't tell you that we have or do not have parapets because of mechanicals, it's just that because we recessed them so much, that we don't need to, architecturally, they'll be covered just based on the geometry of the building.
Okay. I believe that, actually, but forty-five feet off the curb, I don't...
Yeah, I mean, because that's where the, based on the studs and the trusses, you're recessing them along, in noise, you're recessing them along the corridor, so you can see how far back that is.
Okay.
That's not simple.
How about the shuttle? Not gonna go through Grove, or are you gonna go through Route Seven? Can we...
Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, Paul just pulled up the TDM, it does say in there that the shuttle service will not use Grove Avenue.
I was gonna say, I feel like we addressed this.
It does not, does it say where it is gonna use, or it just says not Grove?
How about not Highland either, since I'm watching Highland.
So, I guess it could use, it could use West, or...
I'll give a shout-out if I need to have.
That's my guess, is how it would be, but I do know that the Grove Avenue was specifically addressed at some point with city reviews and from feedback from the neighborhoods.
It specifically says will not use Grove Avenue, I think the idea, and I hadn't been thinking about it before, but Great Falls to West would allow the shuttle to continue making all right turns.
Right.
But I know UPS has updated all their fleet routing, so that their trucks almost never take left turns, so they could certainly be borrowing a page from UPS.
Is that problematic? Not that, not taking a left turn, they're going to Great Falls.
Well, you go in there, you wanna go up, so I'm gonna do right, 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 but coming back, you wanna do Great Falls, so you can continue to go right, right, right. It's just quicker on right turns.
Yeah, but Highland's also right, so don't use Highland either.
Yeah, well, that's...
Highland gets a lot of cut-through, Highland gets serious cut-through.
Yeah, Highland is a residential.
Highland gets through the Grove, if you want. Highland gets cut-through whenever sixty-six backs up, people take the Highland.
Highland over Grove.
So, Highland is actually, once they add that extra lane on sixty-six, it will actually will help what goes on on Highland. Anything there's an accident on sixty-six, you can tell, basically.
I go down Highland just to wait.
I don't live on Highland, but I live right next to it.
You can't see it, so...
And it's a...
Alright, how about any solar panels on this project?
So, we have made a commitment back in the VCs, we have made a commitment to providing space for future solar panels, in addition to, and this was further...
And conduit, I think.
Yeah, so that's why I'm trying to pull up right now in the VCs. So, commitment was provided, oh, then, no, so, yes, so, space for solar panels was reserved on the roof, and a commitment to providing conduit for the future installation of solar panels along the space in the electrical room for those future solar panels as well.
And that's for what, some enterprising...
Yeah, so, that's the problem.
It's not a, it's not a, it's not a commercial, for a project this scale, we just don't have the viability for it now, I mean, we're, we do thousands of apartments across country a year, we've never done it.
I'd recommend you not even buy them, and just look at a power purchase agreement, you could probably get a power purchase agreement today that's less than what you're paying for electricity, you could actually make some money, but...
This was asked, you know, with the environmental committee and some of the council members, asked us to create, as technology advances, to create the space for it, given our roof space, we have a lot of space for it, we will make sure that we have efficient space for the solar panels, it's in our site plan, and then we have an electric room, a large electrical room as well, and we'll be installing the conduit, so it could be future built.
Yeah, I don't think we could require it, but, and they've at least gone a step, they've gone a step of making it ready for solar, and hopefully at some point, somebody will do that math and say, hey, here's a revenue-making opportunity that happens to have a good environmental aspect as well.
Mr. Stevens, while we're on this topic, do you have environmental questions you'd like to bring up?
I do.
You're very reliable in this respect.
Okay. On the electric vehicles, you've got ten stations equipped, and then ten for future through conduit, do we know where those are yet? I think it's part of your site plan, you're supposed to identify where the location of those is.
It is, they can split evenly between commercial and residential?
For the ten?
For the ten?
Yeah.
For the ten and the ten, so five future, so the conduit will be run in the commercial and the residential.
Okay, alright, so...
But for the residential, residential and the...
Commercial.
Yeah, but also with the parking underneath the age-restricted.
I'm trying, Antinett's looking them now, we do have them identified in the site plan as to where they are, they would be on the P zero level for plan, they're not gonna get, you gotta look at the floor, we can look it up and let you know specifically, but they're in the site plan submission.
Yeah, because that was a requirement, I think, on the site plan, was to identify the specific location.
Yep.
Next week, we'll see that next week.
It's in the site plan right now, if I had, I can bring it.
Just flag that for...
Sure, sure.
Because I'm also gonna ask about like bike racks and stuff, so those kind of things are gonna be important.
So, it looks like they are on the P zero level, right near the entry of the commercial entrance along West Broad Street, so that's where you have, and they're identified as EDC and EDCF, meaning future, so there's five and five for the commercial, there are three current installs in between the age-restricted and the main residential elevator, so it's a convenient location for them on the P zero level. Oh, and that's where they all, that's where they all are, so they're all rating between the two elevators, so they'd be accessible to both.
Sorry to get wonky, are these level-two charging stations? I presume that's what they are, but maybe that would be good to know, if they're gonna be level-two, because in theory, you could just put an outlet there, which is a level-one charger.
Now, so, I can show you the spec, I'm getting bottom, yeah, but I can show you the spec that we've used in our other projects.
And that takes twenty-four hours.
You mean like two-twenty volt heavy?
Yeah, two-twenty.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, no, a two-twenty boat would take four hours.
You can have a...
Charge a car.
Or rapid charge, rather.
And I was just gonna suggest at some point, you know, right now, there's a lot of funding for the DC pass chargers, it would be very interesting to have you be able to advertise a DC pass charger, if you can get a grant fund, so it doesn't cost anything over and above what your level-two chargers are. There's money coming from Electrify America, EV Go, there's a lot of organizations that are providing funding right now for DC pass chargers, and that's the one that can charge in fifteen minutes, so...
Really?
Yes.
I want one of those.
Very attractive.
I'm gonna switch it up.
On the environmental certification for the commercial space?
Is that the Ashrae?
It's identified, well, yeah, it's supposed to be Ashrae ninety-point-one, and you identified the twenty-ten version?
Mm-hmm.
But that's the current code, so that's not really, I was wondering why that was in the voluntary concession, since it's not doing anything different than code.
Frankly, that's, frankly, that's what we're providing for the space and working with the city, the city works with Ashrae version two thousand, ninety-point-one version two thousand-ten.
It's a state, state issue.
State, so that's, I mean, that's why we put it in there, was to show that we are conforming with the code and the requirements to make it above and beyond, because as we talked about at our last meeting, there wasn't a way to achieve the lead standard because of the way we're building the space with the coal dump show.
But, you know, I think the problem is, I questioned it too, and I actually had pulled up the website, because I want, because it's basically just HVAC, right? And if it's meeting the state code as it is right now, then it's not really a concession at all.
It's not a concession.
At all, unless you were to like, say you were gonna try to go beyond that, it looked like they have tighter versions.
Well, there is the next level, which is gonna be the twenty-thirteen version, so I don't know.
And there's like a two thousand sixteen they have in here.
Well, that's, that's not...
I know, it's not used right now.
Realistic at this point, but the twenty, I checked with our building inspector, Doug Fraser, he's the one that confirmed, the twenty-ten is the current version.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-thirteen will be adopted fairly soon, and I don't know the exact date, you might wanna check with your energy manager and see, because I think what we were hoping for here was something, since we can't do anything in terms of an environmental certification for the commercial areas, because you're using NGBS, that you could at least use, you know, a somewhat better version of the Ashrae ninety-point-one for the ninety-five thousand square feet.
I'll have to, like you said, talk to our consultant and also talk to the city about the viability of Ashrae twenty thirteen, I frankly don't.
That would be an improvement, and would merit going into the voluntary concessions, because right now, having state code in the voluntary concessions doesn't make sense. What we, what I did was, you know, they're using the National Green Building Standard for the residential component, so I, and we didn't have anything on the commercial space, and so, we had asked them at our last planning commission meeting if they could take a look at some other certification opportunity for the commercial. So, Mr. Muffler shared with me that they do use NGBS in a couple of other jurisdictions, Montgomery County and DC, so I called their staff, and yes, they allow NGBS for mixed-use developments there, but in the case of Montgomery County, they utilize another code for the commercial element called the International Green Construction Code, IGCC, and in the case of DC, they use Energy Star. Both of those might have been a nice opportunity for us, but it requires staff to be able to oversee these programs, and we're not gonna be able to hire staff for those kind of programs. So anyway, that, that's kind of a long, long-winded story, but if you could possibly use the twenty-thirteen version of the state code, the Ashrae ninety-point-one, at least that would be an improvement.
Assuming the value, all will make you.
Okay, because what it currently is, is it's, it's not really any kind of concession at all. It's basically what you have to build.
I don't know, yeah, and I apologize to be misleading, it was never intended to, it was never intended to indicate otherwise.
That's fine. Let's see if I've got any other environmental aspects. I've got other issues, but if you wanna proceed and.
All right, we're gonna get to all of them. Okay, I think.
I've got one for the environmental.
Yeah, yeah, any environmental question, that's what I'd like to.
A lot of people have referred to this as a heat island, so that really, I would encourage you to look into other programs that Mr. Stevens has spoken to and the, and the financing behind them. Because now is the time, they're really pushing that kind of stuff, and you've got the heat island, meaning you've got all the rooftop space.
They are using a TPO, which is a very light-colored surface material, and that will help.
So, yeah, I brought this up before, we have paid for an upgraded TPO finished surface to reduce the impact of the heat island by significant, essentially, it was a significant upgrade over the base TPO that you can use, sort of reduce the heat island.
And what's there now is dark asphalt.
Right, it's completely, it must be completely impervious, heat island today.
So I would hope.
Right, that's true too.
Would be an improvement.
Absolutely, the way it is now.
I just wanna clarify, someone mentioned about how impervious it's gonna be, but like, unlike now, you guys will have to deal with all the stormwater on site.
Yeah, correct, which we have on-site detention.
Today it just, she flows, she flows off, with no control and no quality control.
In fact, I'm hoping that will improve that situation that one of the, our residents mentioned on the flooding on West Street, that there's not as much, well, there's no runoff coming from your side, you basically have to control everything on your side, that that will minimize some of that flooding.
Well, let's go with this topic, because I had some questions about it. Can you go through briefly how the water is gonna be detained and what the stormwater management plan is?
Yes, so we are using different forms of BNP treatment for the water quality requirements, so. So as I mentioned earlier, there are some of those courtyard terraces are gonna be green roof. And then we also have urban biotension planters along the Park Avenue town, townhouses to treat that roof area. And then we also have manufacturer devices to treat some of the additional roof areas. And all of these different BNP treatment facilities are going to outfall to a detention vault, where the runoff will be controlled before it enters the public storm sources.
And where is that located? That's by, behind the movie theater, is where the?
There's actually two detention vaults, they're both in the ground, and there is one that outfalls to Northwest Street, and one that outfalls, so like at the very west end of the site and at the very east end of the site, there are two detention vaults.
You mean very?
Yes, yeah, they're under.
Underneath, underneath.
This whole property drains south and east like everything else, right in that part of town?
Yeah.
Yeah, the water drains in the southeast corner.
Yeah, the water flows.
So it's, it's fair to say, as my understanding, it's a hundred percent contained onsite?
So we, we have met, what are we, eighty-nine percent?
Well, we are completely meeting our water quantity requirements.
Correct.
Our BNP, we are meeting a portion with purchasing oxide nutrient credits for the water quality. But the, in terms of volume of runoff, we are meeting our state requirements, and it is all being contained onsite.
I care about the volume for this conversation.
With a controlled release, so I wouldn't say it's staying onsite because it is gonna be released, but we are providing two detention vaults to control that release.
Yeah, my concern in this case is the flooding of the neighborhoods, so.
Right.
Okay, let's talk then about the construction phasing and the traffic control during that process.
So we had a, as someone mentioned earlier, we had a meeting with the neighborhood two weeks ago, we walked them through what our process will be. We are currently working with the city staff on our construction management plan, which is traffic control, phasing, et cetera, where we park, where trucks come through, all that. So we had about a three-hour meeting last week, we're meeting with the fire captain, police chief this week to discuss with them as well. So based on the sheer size of this project, there are multiple phases to go through, which involve, you know, lane control, sidewalk closures, obviously temporary parking in staging areas. And that is what we're working with the city on right now to finalize, as, I don't know if it's preserved in the site plan or in our voluntary concessions, but we can't start construction until city staff approves that construction management plan. I just have one other thing, oh, the quarterly meetings, we do also have a voluntary concession commitment to meet with the neighborhood quarterly, so advertise and we'll do essentially what we did two weeks, where we'll say, here's our phase for this quarter, here's what we plan on doing, any issues, here's what you can expect over the next three to six months.
All right, so at the meeting on the sixth, I believe it was, you gave a sort of few-minute discussion about how you planned it. I appreciate it has not been approved, you're talking to the various entities, I think it would be beneficial for you to go through that in this forum as well.
Okay.
Which quadrants you're starting, how you're gonna build the ramp, where you're gonna, how you're gonna control the traffic, where the people are gonna park, those kind of issues.
Sure, I will, I will do my best with the understanding that is.
It's not finalized, but just, just how you plan on doing it would be helpful.
Absolutely, it's, it's long, so I will do my, I'll do my best.
Well, it cuts it down from three hours.
Yeah, I'll do my best to, to, to consolidate that for next week.
Is that the job of the transportation coordinator?
We met with the building, the chief building official, Public Works.
In one of the plans, there was a transportation coordinator, the TDM plan, I think.
So the TDM plan.
I don't think the TDM addresses construction.
That's like post occupancy.
Yeah, typically the way the city has separated that out is that it's a construction management plan during construction, that's pretty limited, and it's one group of folks accessing the site versus TDMs and ongoing.
So obviously there's a lot of people involved in that phasing part of it. Again, I would, I don't know how we're going to codify this in the site plan, but I think it's really important that this is, a lot of attention is given to the neighborhoods and how the, the control of the traffic during this long timeline is gonna be managed.
Absolutely, and, and just to clarify from phasing, we're, we're taking down the whole site at once, it's phasing in terms of how it all comes up and occupies, just based on the geometry of the site, so. You have to, remember that we're not excavating this entire site, we're essentially excavating three-fourths of the site, so just based on the geometry is how we had to structure the plan.
And also there was some, a commitment to have some, you know, I guess quarterly meetings or some type of meetings, so I think it would help if we had an idea of when those would be. So if you, if, like maybe next time, come up with some type of schedule, how they would be done, where would they go, where would these meetings be?
I'd be, I'd be happy to provide a tentative schedule based on just when we start construction.
Obviously it could be changed if it needs to be, if we're gonna start in October, it would suggest that we probably have, maybe do a, I mean, early in December before the holidays.
That's my thought as well, is we would do something in November, December, we would have it at the, we would try to work with staff to advertise it, do it at the city center, where we've had all of our other meetings. And I'll, you know, either myself, construction representative, will be there to showcase what the plan is, short-term, longer-term, addressing concerns, questions.
Right, I guess, you know, even since we, you don't have the construction plan set yet, you could even possibly do something in early October, show it, and then you could put off the next meeting till January. But, yeah, so you could actually show what's actually gonna happen.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely, once, once.
But anyway, just think it out, and I think if you gave people a tentative schedule, that would be helpful, because that was one of the requests.
I shall be that.
Does that construction management plan, somebody that only staff approves?
Yes, they showed a draft to us last week, so we had a number of disciplines, Public Works and the building official or the primary coordinators of that review. We participated in that, commented on aspects of it, and then we, we represented the as-built and first occupancy, we have a number of voluntary concessions tied to that, so we make sure all of that's known in terms of the phasing part of it, and what the prerequisites are to get that first seal. That was sort of our involvement, but we're also as project manager of this overseeing it in the future, from a private perspective, and so.
It's not customary for the neighborhood, for public to see.
No, I've.
For project this magnitude.
I've never seen it done on any special exceptions to date, it's just, I mean, a lot of times you might get a special exception approval, and it might be years before they come in the site plan, or like six months at least. And so they're, they're providing it right now in a draft for us to comment on aspects of it, so we can finalize that and get that new building official who is the coordinator or viewer of that.
I know sometimes the construction management plan includes the routing of trucks, is that something, if, if there is going to be an October meeting, is that something that can be briefed to the neighborhood in advance, so that if there is something that they need to know about, something they should be monitoring?
Absolutely.
If they see a truck going the wrong way, who should they call to let them know?
Absolutely.
Yeah, those kinds of things were part of our discussion in the police room, they weren't able to attend the initial draft meeting, and so they're meeting with them again.
Right.
Well, for the first time, they're meeting again, meeting with them, but when do you anticipate that we're gonna finalize the contract?
It's a good question that I think we need to talk to Antonet.
So I mean, there's a good chance the plan will be finalized and available at this point, so, you know, we're working progress, so I think, you know, for the first meeting, that could be, you know, a key component into forming the public, right, as to, you know, what, what to expect with this contract.
But like you said, I can try to show some kind of overview of the phasing in terms of how these buildings are gonna deliver, where they're gonna come from, where we anticipate construction entrances.
Yeah, so how many, how many construction entrances to, and where do you think they're gonna be located, and do you expect them to remain the same locations throughout the entire duration of the project?
Yes and no.
Yes and no.
They, they, just based on the way the project evolves, we have two, and sometimes we'll have one, eventually, you know, they'll be done, but they're both along Northwest Street, I'm trying, sorry, I'm trying to get to a location that. I skipped over it, I guess this might be one of the best pictures I have, oh, you know what, no. So, and Antonet, correct me if I'm wrong, Antonet has been running point on this with my construction team in large detail, but essentially, yeah, yeah, why don't you speak to it?
So I guess, so essentially at the beginning, you know, with all the different curb cuts for the demolition, they're gonna wanna utilize the existing curb cuts to just get in and out of the site. And then as the project continues, that upper left triangle is going to be a slab on grade, and the rest of the site is gonna be excavated for the underground garage. So essentially, the vehicles will be coming at, in and out, and there's an existing entrance off Northwest Street that they're gonna be utilizing both on the west side and on that north side, Northwest Street, as it kind of does a loop around that triangular area. And so the construction entrances will kind of evolve, and as Founder's Avenue gets built, that center area will be used as the construction entrance, I think, to do the cleanup.
I can tell you, it was a quick overview, in terms of phasing, start down here in the southeast corner, this is, this is kind of coming out of the hole and delivering, you start in the southeast corner, you move up north, come back down the age-restricted building, and finish up here, based on where the slab on grade is.
Is the thought that you're gonna do one building at a time, or there's gonna be a bunch of concurrent?
It'll all be going at once.
How many cranes are you anticipating?
To read, but I think one of the cranes might just be to build one of the cranes, so I think maybe two.
Two?
There are three tire crane locations, but.
Wow, I'm surprised you covered the site in two, two cranes.
That's why I think there might be three, and the third one might be more of a temporary crane.
Okay, yeah, go for it.
Before you do the demolition, you are gonna do rodent control?
Rodent control?
It's in the voluntary concession.
That's in the voluntary concessions.
Then yes, the answer to that is yes, I assume that will occur during the same phase when we'll be doing the hazmat remediation of the site as well.
Yeah, and don't tell them you're coming in.
The rodents?
Yeah.
No, they won't be getting those, everyone else.
Don't let them know beforehand, but it used to be we didn't have that in, and, I, you know, but, yeah, we got it.
We added a three-on-one.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, that was an old building.
Yeah, because that's so necessary to the neighbors.
Sure. I'm glad I'm not that guy, but yes.
He's told everybody to let their cats out.
No, because then they might be killed, and.
All right, we're mostly done this list except for the crosswalk, and again, I just wanna give the planning commissioners a chance to speak to it, though I think, as I understand it, you're open to anything and have provided money accordingly. But I do want, since it's such a polarizing issue, I want to give everybody a chance to sort of speak to it if they so choose. Does anybody want to voice their opinions?
Can you respond first? Because you said at the beginning that your engineer said, this is not good, right?
We don't recommend putting one there now, and we have looked, I know at the SE amendment discussions that we had, there were, you know, we were asked to take a look to see what we could do. And I think we specifically had also mentioned like intersection geometry, because that is one of the big issues here. And so just to give you background, when we first started this project years and years ago, we met with the city and we also met with Nova Parks, and there are just issues with trying to reconfigure, adding street area and reconfiguring the street spaces within the Nova Parks land. And so it was something that we looked at early on, and it just wasn't something that we could achieve.
How about the alternative plan that was, you know, goes, dropped, they crossed?
Yeah, so, so we are, we did offer this alternative, and at this point, the city's engineer is taking a look at, at a value we think was.
Can I?
What, can you summarize what the concerns, the track is going too fast, and it's unsafe, we'll be walking.
Yeah, and I, it's like the proximity, the visibility, everything that's gonna be going on, both on-site and the multiple turning movements, I think even one of the speakers, you know, talked about the concern of the sidewalk on Northwest Street. And I think, you know, if there's a concern about too much activity for things happening on the sidewalk on Northwest Street, I would be concerned about distractions of people crossing in the actual road, when there's just so much going on at the intersection, so that's, the visibility is a major concern.
Can I, can I ask, can you clarify what the current situation is? The current situation is no crosswalk, but go back to the, the one that you keep showing, not this one?
This one.
That, those hash things, what are those?
It's pavement strapping.
So, and so there's no, nothing raised, and, and the intention is still for just one lane to go through, it'll only be a turn lane, only one lane to come back this way, those are hash marks, that's just paint on the, on the ground.
That's to help with channelize.
And then, and then what you guys have agreed is if we approve site plan next week, sometime between now and before the project's over, some cutoff, somebody at the city could say, yes, build this crosswalk, otherwise we get seventy-five K instead of fifty K, and we can figure it out later.
That's correct.
We're actually gonna study it later.
Do we know, I had a question for that, what, what does a study like that look like? What do we look at? What conclusions might we come from that?
The, the traffic engineers will do that at the time, under the research.
Okay, do we know what traffic engineers would look, I just, I feel like we're making a big, we're trying to make a big decision right now, based on what traffic engineers tell us, and then what we're gonna do is we're gonna pay some traffic engineers to study it, which makes me think they don't actually know what's gonna, how it's gonna work. So I'm confused how they're giving us advice now, I'm just curious what they're gonna study, what they're gonna measure, what conclusions are possible, like they may come back and say, actually, a crosswalk there would be fine.
No, and I just wanted to preface this because I felt like I kind of sold Antonet and put her on an island there, this is something that's not just Antonet saying this, this was our independent traffic engineer and the city's traffic engineer.
No, and that's why I'm not, I don't even, I'm not like mad at anybody, I just feel like if it's too dangerous to put a crosswalk in there, then to me it seems very foolish to put a sidewalk up there and encourage people to cross the street anyway. Because if people are distracted by someone walking down the sidewalk, they're gonna be really distracted when they dart across the street to get over there, so to me, if we're not gonna do a crosswalk, it does not make any sense to me to put a sidewalk.
I disagree.
And I know, and I know you said last time, we're always trying to get sidewalks, but we didn't get a sidewalk up by your house.
That sidewalk is not just for that development.
For people to cross, that sidewalk to come down West Broad.
What is the, what is this, what, who's gonna use that sidewalk?
It's also to connect people to the signalized intersection.
From where? I, I'm just trying to understand, like, because that sidewalk, it's off the top of the screen, but as soon as you get up to the bike path, there's no more sidewalk, right?
Today, there's not.
Look at the picture, there's no place to put a sidewalk up there.
He's talking about putting in a parallel path for pedestrians.
On West Street, on that side of West?
No, no, what I'm saying is, right now, the sidewalk ends at Steeple's, before Steeple's, or placed on this, but doesn't mean in the future, I mean, West Street is wide, there's rarely any on-street parking on the north side.
Okay, but I.
There's none there today, doesn't mean there, you know, these are decisions that get made decades ago.
Right, but when somebody gets run over by a car in the meantime, because they're darting.
The point is right now, like, for example, hundreds of people live.
But they don't have to dart, they use that first crosswalk.
Off of Northwest Street. And when you wanna walk down today, let's say today I wanna walk to the Wells Fargo Bank.
From, from.
From my house, I live on the west side of West Street, and if I wanna walk to the Wells Fargo Bank, which I, I'm an account holder at Wells Fargo, I wanna go.
You should do online banking.
I wanna go to the ATM, I need cash, I need cash, I need old-fashioned cash, I need to walk to the ATM.
That's really crazy.
Which I do, if I wanna do that today, without, I have to crisscross the street three times to then get back over, whereas if this was built, I could walk, I would have to be in the shoulder.
There's no shoulder.
Yes, there is.
On West Street?
And the city just painted a shoulder, actually, for parking, they painted a parking lane there, and it's already peeling, so I don't know how much we spent on the painting, but we painted a shoulder for, for parking lane there. So all I have to do is walk, and by the time I get to Steeple's. So all I have to do is walk and by the time I get to Steeple's, then you can essentially, you know, I'd be able to get onto a sidewalk in that stretch, you know, it's just a very short stretch.
So real quick, so we're encouraging you to take your life in your hands, walking down the side of the street with no sidewalk?
There's no life in your hands.
Well, I'm just saying, you can cross the street once and then you're on a sidewalk on this side of West Street, you cross that acrosswalk and you walk along this structure. I just, I just don't understand, it seems silly to me to spend money to build, not just spend money, but to put people at risk, encourage them to walk over there, run across the street, but we won't put a crosswalk in. I just think we should put a crosswalk in.
Well, I'm fine with that too, if we can make it safe, but.
That sidewalk does more than just what you're talking about. It brings you to the first crosswalk, it brings you to Broad, it brings people to.
From where?
From coming down west, there's a lot of people who live on West Street.
But there's no, they're already on the other side of West Street, unless they're walking in the street.
If I may.
Well, a lot of people walk on that side because the buses pick up on the non-sidewalk side.
There is a, there is a strategy long-term for getting that sidewalk along West Street. Right now, there's a sidewalk on one side, it's deficient, there are utility poles in it, the sidewalks don't meet ADA requirements when it hits the driveway, so certainly that's something that could be cleaned up. On the other side of the street, it's been a repeated question of how do you get a sidewalk over there? There was a project that looked at putting a sidewalk along the entire length, that proved to be unpopular in its entirety, but city staff is always exploring, how do we get these bits and pieces back? So funded in the CIP is an intersection project for West and Lincoln, which is the first signalized intersection beyond Steeple's. When that intersection goes in, if this sidewalk wraps around Northwest Street and takes it through Nova Parks, then there is an opportunity to look at that intersection project to make that connection.
Right.
When the next crossing at Grove and at West and Oak gets fixed, we can fix up that intersection.
So what are we going to do to discourage people from darting across the street, getting killed because we're, we don't want to put a crosswalk? We need to do something other than some hash marks on the street.
This was explored during the streetscape effort and if you look at what's written up in the city's streetscape policies now, there are ideas for raised crossings, for sidewalks with pedestrian activated lights. There are a lot of treatments that other jurisdictions are using to make exactly these kinds of situations safe. At the CACT's request, the city attorney did explore what powers the city has to lower speed limits within the city. If there is an appropriate engineering study, the city can actually reduce the speed limit below 25 miles per hour. This is already a challenging intersection, I think, as a lot of people are saying, there's a lot of activity going on here. I don't know that many people should be taking this even at 25, which is actually pretty fast. When you look at speed limits from other countries, they would typically have a speed limit at 30 kilometers per hour here, which actually works out to 17.
Which we wouldn't know what that is.
It's 17 or 18 miles, 30 hours.
I guess.
It's 17 or 18 miles an hour. Portland, I understand, just rolled out a program that says, Portland, Oregon, just rolled out a program that says 20 is fast enough, this was Jeff Sykes, one of the city's transportation planners found this, that Portland, Oregon is pushing a 20 mile an hour speed limit in their residential districts. I think they recognize that in places like this, lower speeds just makes sense and so you can design the street.
I know I asked this question last time and I can't remember the answer, but what prevents us from building a sidewalk on the other side of the existing burning bushes? It's not, if that's parkland and that's not allowed? Because that would keep people away from the street and it would achieve all of these things that we're talking about.
Well, and I, yes, there, there's like that ditch in that between the trail.
Fill in a ditch with some dirt? You guys have plenty of dirt, you're digging a big hole.
I think that's conveying the water.
My understanding is that the desire was to have the sidewalk along Northwest Street.
Who desires that, these two guys? They want to be right up by the street?
Absolutely.
Well, this was part of the. But seriously, if the sidewalk were on the other side of the burning bushes, it would totally achieve everything you're talking about, right? Like who wants it up by the street? And why?
But there's water control over there.
And I just have the vitality in that area.
It's part of a network.
Having more people doing things actually does make it safe. It's unsafe now, adding in a crosswalk and adding in a sidewalk is not going to make it more unsafe.
We're not adding a crosswalk.
We'll slow the traffic.
Should.
It does serve as traffic.
I'm, my point is if we add a, if we add a crosswalk, I'm all for the sidewalk here, sounds great. If we're not adding a crosswalk, it seems to me way smarter to put a sidewalk on the other side of the burning bushes or something to keep people away from that street because it, I guess you're right, when someone gets run over, it slows down traffic.
You do recognize that that sidewalk takes people from Grove up to the crosswalk that is going in?
It's not going to take it, it's an intersection, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, well, I'm just saying, but technically, if you don't put that sidewalk, then they can't get to the safe crosswalk.
Right, and so if that sidewalk went behind the burning bushes, it'd be even a shorter walk and be even safer.
I don't think you can, I don't know if you could.
Developers are going to pay to put a sidewalk anywhere in the city, I mean, we really, we really have to think hard why we would not say put it in.
And that's what I'm asking, I don't know, you guys keep saying something about storm water, maybe there's a reason, but.
Anytime anyone ever says sidewalk goes nowhere, that's the, that's such a terrible attitude.
We just approved something where we let the sidewalk go, because remember it didn't go anywhere to walk to school? Like now we're suddenly getting all milten about it?
I mean, at one point, I'm just saying that we should always, if someone, if a developer's going to pay to put it in at no expense to the city taxpayers, we should put it in.
All right, I agree with that, let's put it on the other side of the burning bushes.
Well, we can't because that's not our property.
Why can't we? Okay, is that the reason, this is what I'm asking?
You got a separate.
Nova.
Is that, is that true?
Yes.
Yes.
And you can't put a path over that hill.
Can't put a path over a hill? I give up, I feel like I'm asking, I feel like I'm asking a fair, honest question and I'm not getting any reason.
Sidewalks will not be dangerous.
There is a stakeholder that's not in the room, that Nova Parks owns that land.
I would love to invite them to the room.
And so they, they did look at this, I think the other thing that's going to happen here, remember that the utilities are being undergrounded here, not that the giant transmission lines, but there are, you know, every day.
You have to do that, otherwise you can't put a sidewalk.
Well, that's how you get the tree plantings there. So today, the burning bush can go there because it's underneath the utility lines, but by removing the utility lines, you can get canopy trees, you can get six of them lining the street. This is generally what the city's been looking for is tree-lined streets with planting areas between the sidewalk and the street. And so it's an opportunity to make that happen on Northwest Street and it's bundled together with the stormwater.
I think they should underground utilities and leave the burning bushes there, I'm looking at a picture right now, so.
All right, well, this was actually the conversation I wanted us to have. I just wanted, I wanted to hear the opinions, this is, I think, what you're running up against and why your solution is a good one, which is punt and let us sort of sort it out. For what it's worth, I'm of the opinion that we can figure out a way to put a crosswalk there. I'm for the sidewalk, and this is just, you know, just one person speaking, I don't have any authority on this, but I feel like there are solutions, whether it's, you know, either reconfiguring the intersection, which is the most drastic, to just some lighted signage, to lowering speed limits. I feel like we can solve this problem. We have a giant development that's going to, you know, totally change the, the essence of this area and that the foot traffic we are trying to generate to this site is part of what we're trying to do here. And to ignore that by not putting a sidewalk when we are trying to encourage foot traffic off the WNOD trail from directions that I think people are going to come from the neighborhoods to want to go, you're not going to want to ride your bike or to, you know, drive to this, this facility, that we're just ignoring the obvious. But I know that's not your issue, I think your solution is good, which is to say, sort it out, we'll do whatever you want, we're giving you money. But it is clearly a conversation that the community needs to continue to have. And I wanted to hear what the opinions were.
Yeah, I just think like, I think Keith left, but I think he made a good point, which is, we're not, I don't know, we're using a bunch of like weird logic, like to me, let's get creative, let's.
I agree 100% of this.
Let's get the park people in here and say, hey, we've talked about doing parallel paths anyway, can we, in this one little section, implement that, either where the current gravel path is, make that into a sidewalk, or go behind those burning bushes, it's safer, it achieves everything that we want, get the sidewalk, I'm sure they don't care, they'll pay for the sidewalk, it doesn't matter if it's here or there, whatever, they'll pay for that sidewalk. I think it's going to be unfortunate when we spend our $25,000 to study and realize, dang it, we need a frigging crosswalk, ooh, they already gave us the money to study, now we gotta, you know, take 10 years to go over the money to build it.
Yeah, look, this is.
I think the issue though is like, you really need to go walk that, you can't just come over the hill to get to the first crosswalk.
I have walked it, I'm staring at it.
And we need the first crosswalk to be accessible.
I'm staring at it, there is no hill that I could.
We have some money that's being proffered by the developer. It would be good if we use that money effectively, but we do at some point, once this is built and we see that people are running across the street, we're going to have to fix it anyway. I mean, that's just my view of it. We're taking the view currently like, it's not safe and it's got all these visibilities, there's going to be common sense and if unfortunate if it comes out of the city's coffers at some point after the development is created and people have to walk there, we're just going to have to do it. Yeah, I think that would be bad timing and foolish to not use the money that the developer's proffering. But again, I wanted to hear the debate, the developers offered money to help us fix it, and so this is something that I think we need to have a further conversation from the community, or we'll have to fix it. I mean, I hope it's, we fix it before someone gets killed, that would be the worst scenario here, but this to me makes just common sense. This is how I would cross the street. There's just no question in my mind, I'm coming down Grove, I'm going to cross here, it's just it, it's not even to me that complicated, but I appreciate there's engineering and speed things that other experts have to figure out.
The funny thing is, the last time we talked about it, I thought we talked about going in and putting it in, but just putting a bump out and, and, you know, things that make it safer.
Well, last time we had this conversation, Mr. Winstrom was here and he was of the opinion of, for the city, that this was not safe. We're hearing from the engineer, the civil engineer here, that this is not safe. The experts seem to have a strong opinion about it. I don't agree with the experts, that's, you know, for what it's worth, that's my own opinion and I hope we don't make a foolish mistake by saying, this is just too complicated when I, you know, to use Mr. Thurston's comment, common sense here to me, should prevail on this, especially with, we're talking about some street markings. Now, I appreciate that if you encourage crossing and it's not done safely, then that's a mistake too, but I feel like we can solve this, this is, we've solved all these other problems, a crosswalk shouldn't be that complicated. All right, but let's, let's move on. I think I've covered the list that I started at the beginning of this, but other people said they had comments they wanted to ask. Let me just open it up now to the other.
Speaking, may I?
Yes, you may.
Speaking of Nova and the WNOD trail, you know, I think I saw something that they were going to try to put a curve in there or to slow down the bicyclists, were they changing anything there?
It's the crossing on West Street.
Yeah, crossing on West Street.
Where the bridge is.
Okay, and I was just wondering how that was going. Have you talked with the two businesses, Wells Fargo and the Butler Place?
I've not, I've not had conversations with their representatives.
Do they know that this is coming?
I assume they know by the city, they have not reached out to us.
I don't know, I talked with one of the managers last week.
It wouldn't surprise me if they've had contact with, contact with the guys at Spectrum, Dick and Peter, who are, who know that area.
They should find, know about it. Let's see, are there streetlights?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question about streetlights?
Yes, go ahead.
You're using a different type internally than I was going to go along the city, right?
Yes.
That struck me as a bit odd, we're going to have traditional streetlights on the city portion around the outside and they're going to have a rather modern looking streetlight on the interior, so.
But they're going to have the regular ones on the streets?
The city, on the city.
Okay.
I don't know how it struck you, but it just kind of struck me as odd to have the juxtaposition of the two styles.
Listen, didn't you say the streetscape on Founder's Row was going to be the same as the?
That's the, that's the private, that's the private row.
No, I know it's private, but did you, did I misinterpret that you had said it was going to be matching the?
If I did, I apologize.
I actually like their style of streetlight better.
I mean, it's their style.
Ouch, ouch. That's another battle.
Founder's Avenue, you know, public experience.
No, that's fine.
I was probably more calling it or something.
And then just two other quick things, going to remind you again about exhaust vents matching?
Yeah, that was in the, that was in the presentation last time.
Okay, I know, but.
It's going to be mirrored, right?
Yeah, we, we had problems. And then the other thing that really Rexon Park has got to think about in terms of Memorial Day staging, because that is a staging area for the Memorial Day Parade, so we got to think way ahead on that.
The park in West.
Because it starts right there, goes on up West Street and makes the curve onto Park.
They stage on Park and, or sorry, they stage on Lincoln and they stage on West.
Yeah.
It shouldn't affect it.
Come together. They should be okay.
Just, just make sure everybody knows about it.
Yeah.
That's it for me, boy, I've crossed off all kinds of good stuff.
We're on hour three, so it makes sense. No, we're just about it. Anyone else with comments?
I do. Unless someone else wants, I have architecture, I don't know if other people have other things that are more.
I have other things, but go ahead.
Okay, so thank you for working on the east-facing wall and so we can no longer call it the prison wall.
Thank you. Pass it on to Eric.
And I love the breaks you did along Broad Street. So right now, everything is looking fabulous, but now it really highlights how much I still dislike that corner of the 55-plus building. So I know you guys switched to the metal, but it's just a very, it's funny, to me, that is the most visible corner, it's visible from both streets. And now the rest of the, rest of the whole thing looks great, but now you have, it's very cold on that corner. You know, I know you're using that natural beige, but I just wonder if, between that and the yellow brick, and if that yellow brick doesn't seem as broken up as like the yellow brick on the former prison wall, the Good Wall now, we'll call it the Good Wall now. Okay, I just don't, I don't think the colors there work. I think it's just very cold and I think having all that metal, it's funny to me how now the Good Wall has all this nice brick in there and it's broken up and it has a darker brick in there that gives it more style and now we have this very bland, cold-looking corner. We've got to do something about it because it just is not attractive, at least to me. It just, I just feel like there needs, maybe even if, like, like with the Good Wall, you now have that burgundy-type brick that's in there that kind of breaks it up, we need something like that on the corner, something to make it, it just looks, at least in the renderings, it looks very bland and looking at the color back here, that definitely is bland. So I hate for that corner not to be more spectacular, as now the rest of the whole thing looks so great.
I think that one of the things that really sells that corner, and look, we've had
this conversation before, I understand.
Well, it's gotten better.
I appreciate that a lot.
Unfortunately, because you fixed all the other issues.
Our language is getting better.
Well, no, it's like the problem is, now that you fixed all the good stuff, the Good Wall looks better than that corner.
That metal panel was a significant upgrade, too, to turn that to metal panel.
No, no, it is, but I think a better, maybe a different color, a warmer tan, I mean, that's just like very...
I'll see what we have. I mean, again, this, you have to look at the whole thing.
It's almost puce. It's just not a great color.
One of the things that the rendering doesn't do a good job of, just because it's really hard to do, is the retail experience on the ground floor. So when you have really engaging street, street funds from the retail, that's really going to open it as well. That's the, that's the metal panel.
That's the metal panel. So you can see it's kind of a very cold beige. It's not a warm beige. And, to me, it's, because it has a lot of gray tones in it, so, you want to look at it closer. She was trying to see it.
Yeah, sure, yeah, we're open to. It's in the presentation as well.
Yeah, but anyway, I just, I just think maybe, like, looking at the color there, or getting some darker colors mixed in a little bit, just so, because it really does look bland.
Yeah.
And it was better when the Good Wall was bad, because then it looked better, but now the Good Wall is good. And I think everything else, we already talked about, environmental stuff and everything else I had, so I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I really want to reinforce the city arborist comment about the street tree along West Broad Street, not to use the Schumard Oaks as part of the so-called red oak, and those are succumbing throughout the city. There's a bacterial descorch, so I really, really encourage you to choose what she's got there.
I think they've already been told.
I was going to say, I think we responded to that.
Great, great. Sorry to see all that happening, look at the red oak, but it is what it is. Just one other, final question on the WNOD. Assuming that the park authority gets the grant to split the trail and form, you know, two trails, when it crosses West Street, is it going to go back to one right there, or will it cross West Street as a separated trail?
So they have been awarded both of their grants, well, one is a, they won both their grants from the NVTA and, as well as the Transportation Alternatives Program. The reason I hesitated on the award is because the NVT grant technically passes through the city, but they've won the award. The, we've, staff has been in conversation, so staff to staff, we've been talking about how to handle that transition. The Citizens Bridge, which is the bridge that crosses over Route 7, will not be expanded into multiple lanes with this, and so there had to be some point to transition it down. And so what staff has been considering is to make the transition at the new signalized intersection with Northwest, and then simply leave it as one wider trail from that intersection between, for that span between Grove and West.
Okay, well, at least it won't be pinching right out West Street, then.
If you are traveling west, it will pinch down as you approach the signal. If you're traveling east, it will have still been one lane.
Okay, so it won't be until you get east of West Street before it widens out.
Correct.
So that even, makes it even more important to have a sidewalk there, because now, you know, people, there was some discussion, some letters about having four parallel paths right here, but that's not going to be, because we're not going to have a separated area. So, sharing with the bikes, sharing with the bikes is dangerous, so it makes it even more important to have a sidewalk on that side, because you can't, today, sometimes, you know, you go on the trail, if it's not too busy with bikes, but it makes it even, I think it makes the sidewalk even more important.
One of the things that I thought was pretty shocking when, when Nova Parks was making the push for their grant applications, is they were showing trail usage through the years. Trail usage as a total count has been going up, but pedestrian usage has actually been going down. And so I am interested in seeing what actually happens with pedestrian counts when that second trail goes back in. Does it actually spike as people have an opportunity to enjoy the trail?
Yeah, because otherwise it's pretty dangerous.
All right. Look what you did, Brent. We started this whole thing up again. All right, anybody else have any other...
Go for a stroll.
I would love to.
Take them out.
Hold on, stop, stop, timeout.
I don't understand the resistance.
Cut off his mic, somebody.
You guys are just, we don't need to address this. I think we need to walk together, because I don't think you recognize where the embankment is.
Exactly.
There is an embankment.
What's your question about this development?
What? You don't have any question, okay. So, how do we, I think, I don't have any more questions. How do we make sure, on the things that the city has control over, and not the developer, that we can have these conversations about the crosswalk, the sidewalk, since that seems to be one, the concern about the parking for the neighborhoods. This has come up with every single development, and it's a reasonable request by all the neighbors, and, but that's not in anybody's control who's in this room, so.
I can give you an update on that, because I heard, so I went to CACT meeting this week, and, or last week, actually, you know, Wednesday. So, so what's coming down now is they're talking about doing 24-hour-only access to people who live on the street, so that no one can park on Grove except the people who live on Grove. So that, that was brought before the CACT discussed it. They're...
What about Park? They had some concern about Park.
Well, I...
That'd mess with the church.
Well, that's a whole nother thing, but I was going to say, for Grove, that's what they're talking about. The CACT's come back and said that they're uncomfortable with a public street not being used by any other public that live there, especially if people are going to West End Park and want to drive their kid over to use a little, you know, the feature, the skating feature or something, that they would not be able to park and use West End Park, because the other entrance is on Broad Street and there's no parking. And you can't really park in the shopping center and walk over or anything like that. You can park on Birch, but there's a lot of that parking is taken up by those businesses. So, anyway, so there, I just want to, that was what was, what's been put out right now is 24-hour-only people in Grove Park there. I think they should just modify and maybe do like 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM only residents, and then during the day, make, allow only the two-hour parking or one-hour parking, and that would allow these people that are going to West End Park to park sometime there. Or maybe just some spots at the beginning at Grove, like in front of the townhouses, being open for other people to park at.
Look, I don't need, those are fine suggestions. I don't know, the planning commission needs to solve this. In fact, we don't have the purview.
No, no, but I'm just saying, the CACT's putting some letters together on it.
But this is a consistent issue that comes up, and it's going to come up again and again and again, and I'm just not sure I'm clear on what our policy is. If our policy is, hey, we don't do permitting because it's a public street, that's okay, or if it's, we do permitting, you do it for one neighborhood, I think we need to be able, I just want to be with the...
So the first...
It's case by case, right?
Yeah, right now, it's case by case. The first foray into this, well, the first foray was, was, I don't know, eight years ago, the city tried to do a zone parking system throughout the entire city, and there was tremendous pushback, and the thing was scrapped. But the idea actually floated back into the comprehensive plan as a way of having these conversations about development, especially when it is close to existing predominantly single-family residential neighborhoods. So, the 301 West Broad project was actually the first foray into the zone parking. So, as the building was being leased up, staff and the condo associations and the apartment owner worked proactively to put in place a zoned parking restriction program. The way that one operates is that anyone who lives in the neighborhood can get the permits free. They also have access to a book of visitor passes, and then the parking is controlled such that it is by permit only in the evening hours. I think it starts at either 7:00 or 9:00 PM, and then it opens again at 5:00 or 7:00 in the morning. And then it's, it's open for general use outside of those times.
Again, reasonable, it doesn't matter what the solution is, but I'm not sure it's clear at all what the process is, whether, if it's case by case, that's fine, but, like, what's the process once you say, "Hey, I think we should have this"?
See, the process has started.
Yeah, the process has started. That Jeff Sykes, who's the planning staff liaison of the CACT, has already met with the neighbors and the neighbor reps, there's Lisa, we're raising her hand. He's been meeting with the folks on Grove Avenue. He's shared the materials from Winter Hill. He's also met with the folks on Park Avenue, and we're also trying to figure out how to address the problem on Staples Court, that that is a private street, so there'd have to be some conversation about how that would be enforced and what cooperation would be permissible through some sort of MOA or some other written agreement with the police department. And so those conversations are ongoing. I think there's time to address it, because of course, no one will be occupying the buildings until they're constructed, but that doesn't mean we take it slowly. We started the conversation, and we're trying to form the program now. The CACT is being involved, because they can be a good arbiter of who are all the stakeholders that need to be represented when this program's being developed. Commonly near commercial areas, when the city restricts parking, it is for two-hour access. That seems to have been a model that works for other areas of the city.
Okay, all right, as long as there's a process, that's great. I got just one final question about bikes.
Yes.
Because of its location to the WNOD trail, and just in general, I find this to be a very important issue. Where are we going to put bike racks? Are we doing, I thought Capital Bike Share was going to have some locations. Can you just point those out and make sure we're meeting those requirements?
Capital Bike Share's design location is on the north end of the site, so as you get off the WNOD trail, that's where Bike Share location is.
Makes sense.
The bike racks, you can kind of see here, this is an outdated floor plan, though, we've actually expanded it, but there are bike racks, secure bike racks, right on the interior of the garage. There are also, per the streetscape standards, bike racks surrounding the site that are next to your bike racks.
Those bike racks are for the residents?
Residents and guests, they're a resident and guest bike parking. This one's outdated. Next week, I can bring you a floor plan. It's in the site plan.
Okay, so let's say I don't want Capital Bike Share, I'm going to ride my bike to your establishments. Where am I putting my bike?
Either you can put it, again, on this, this is outdated, so I'll bring the updated floor plans that are in the site plan next week, but we have interior spaces to park bikes, both if you live there, there's your own dedicated bike parking, if you're visiting there to go shop, there's your own dedicated bike parking. That's interior. Then there's exterior bike racks as well.
Yeah, can you please show those next week?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because my fear is that people are going to just show up and be dropping their bikes or locking their bikes right in front of your establishments, and it's, it's not clear to me, maybe this is outdated, you said that five times, how it's going to work, but to take all the visitor bike racks and put them inside where it's hard to go is, seems to me, a challenge unless maybe it's well-signed or something like that. It just...
So we've worked with the city, one, we're meeting the city's requirements for bike parking, both exterior and interior. That's part of the site plan review. I will show you explicitly where we've gotten called out on our landscaping plans online.
Yeah, so there's, I mean, there's two parts to this, right? The first is to meet the code, and the second part is to make it so that these bikes are not in your way. I mean, I'm a big bike rider, and I would probably bike to this just exactly for the proximity. It's just far enough that I'd probably bike. I don't want bikes in my way as I'm trying to walk through, and it just ruins the retail experience. So I want that to be thought through, because we are trying to promote that in the city as well, and doing a good job putting bike racks everywhere. So, I just want that to be a thought, had been thought through. All right, I don't have anything else. Going once, going twice? All right, terrific. Do we even have more on our agenda here?
I don't think so.
Not much.
No.
Just...
Reports.
Reports.
Reports, all right. So, thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, thank you.
And we'll see you soon.
Yeah.
We should do this every week for the next, like, three weeks.
Oh, yeah.
All right, we have no other business. Do we have approval of minutes?
No.
That's right. You guys just left us. That's totally right.
Yeah, there were only three of us.
I was available, the other...
Yeah, 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 all right.
I wasn't going to be here then.
No, no minutes.
You picked the wrong Monday.
It was probably the most...
Gathering.
Got it.
Oh, I was thinking about what are the colors.
It was the most seminal meeting we have had as a planning commission in 10 years.
Did you guys just chat about stuff?
No, it was a real meeting.
Sounds like a regular meeting.
All right, planning commissioner reports.
I have, well, I was going to report more on this. So I did go to CACT, and so along with talking about the parking regulations, how it's going to work on Grove, so I don't think Jeff Sykes was ready to talk about Park yet. I think he's still talking to people there. So they're just floating options for Grove, so it's not set. So they talked about that, and they're going to do their next neighborhood traffic comment program in the Annandale and Gundry neighborhood, so in Winter Hill. So they're going to be looking at, you guys know how they, they did put in the flash and stop sign there at Gundry, and it's helped some, but they're going to be looking at all of the streets and try to figure out what else they could do to slow traffic down. Because it's amazing, they put down the strips for speed, and it's amazing how fast some people are willing to go on Gundry with cars parked on either side. I was like, whoa. So, so they're going to be looking at that, which I thought was a good choice. And on the 21st, they're going to have, what do they call this thing? Sorry. They're going to have, yeah, they're going to have like a parklet. So it's where you take a couple parking spaces and make a park.
A pop-up, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a pop-up park. It's going to be on South Maple, beside the Lincoln, and they're basically taking up a couple of spaces. They're going to have some games and the little tart, the gluten-free bakery there on Maple's going to provide some refreshments. And so, it's just, CACT wants to just show that you don't always have to use parking spots for parking. You can always take back parking from cars and use it for other stuff.
Not by North Side Social.
Yeah, it kind of goes with their neighborhood play.
Make a parklet there.
Yeah, that kind of goes with their neighborhood play thing, where they take out a street for a little while with games on. So, anyway, so if anyone's around during the day on the 21st, go down South Maple, you can see our parklet. Our staff is doing most of the heavy lifting, so, I think it's Akita, yeah, Akita Ruzzi?
It's an exciting project. So, Akita Ruzzi, who's got some design background, has really taken an interest in this project. It's being funded through an 80/20 grant, so 80% of the money is coming from the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation under the city's Transportation Demand Management Award. So it includes a range of things like incentives, as well as getting the information out and demonstration projects. And it was a successful grant. It was the city, first time the city ever applied for it. Carrie Odenino put it together, and she won the award. Now we're getting around to actually investing the funds. Parking Day is coming out. We're also expecting to do some monitoring of our TDM programs, as well as giveaways associated with Car Free Day, which we did last year, as well as giveaways to promote the opening of Bike Share, whether it's through fobs given away through raffles, smart trip card giveaways as well.
That's cool. And then the other thing I did, and several other of our planning commission members were there, we went to the George Mason High School committee meetings, the design committee meetings. So I'm on the Fine and Performing Arts Committee, and so that was, and that was an interesting meeting, because as we currently stand, we are not built in a fully functional theater, so that's kind of my fight, because my kids are in those programs. And then Lyndy can talk about, she went to other committees.
I went to a couple.
Yeah.
And Tim was there as well. Tim went to environmental, sustainability.
What? You?
You know, you'd think he'd find something else.
I got lost. Slaying the picture for the ribbon cutting for the playground.
Oh, yeah.
You're in that, too.
Lyndy, you have more? Are you, are you done?
Very quickly, of course. Rexon Park, that fall festival was phenomenal. And they had the ribbon cutting for the, for the new playground, the new...
Cherry Hill Park.
Yeah, Cherry Hill Park, which was really, really kind of neat. They're still coming in with plans on Big Chimney that we didn't get to. The EDA is, and Paul, this is something you, we need to get something, so, from the information from the EDA. They did a, Phillips did a study of Broad Street.
Inventory.
Inventory of Broad Street that probably we should have, have a look at.
An inventory of it.
Yeah.
All the telephone poles, benches, everything, it's in the streetscape.
And then, also, you might want to report sometime on all the changes that are being proposed on Park Avenue, and with, you know, the extension of not only parking, but the sidewalks and all that kind of good stuff. And the downtown park is still on hold.
Till October.
Till October.
Are they going to re-bet it?
They're waiting, they're waiting for new pricing.
New pricing, okay.
Yeah, there, yeah. And then, Tim and I went to two city council meetings on the affordable living policy, which will be coming our way. So we've got to get ready for that.
Well, and the biggest one, it was headlines in the paper, was spending money on 200 Park Avenue to, there's money already in the budget, and Jim Snyder presented a plan on kind of building out that whole street, in terms of the sidewalk and...
Yeah.
Yeah, there's an opportunity available because of the way the CIP got put together. So, there was, when the Park Avenue Great Streets Project, it was the study report, Heather Scharfeter worked with the city for a time, she presented a concept based on best practices from other communities, and I thought she put together a pretty compelling vision of what Park Avenue could become. Based on that and the positive feedback from the planning commission, CACT, city staff started going out for grant applications to support this. Originally, city staff was chasing an 80/20 grant, 80% from the federal government, 20% local, which was the Transportation Alternatives Program. We discovered that, one, the city was asking for too much money from the program for the size of the project, and, two, it was not as competitive as some other things that were asking for that. So instead, the city went for a program that was better geared toward this kind of project, and that was the state Smart Scale program. That actually has no local match. By the time we switched gears and made a successful grant application for the Smart Scale award, which we were successful, I think there was a two or two and a half million dollar award, the local match for the TAP had already been programmed. Now, those are transportation-specific funds. They're sitting in the city's transportation special fund, which is a product of the NVTA funding streams. So that money is there, it's programmed for Park Avenue. The two and a half million dollars won't be available for construction for several years. It was an award over a six-year timeframe, and so what the EDA was discussing at their most recent meeting was an opportunity to use that 240,000 in the fall now, so that there would be improvements in place when City Hall opens, when the library is being discussed, North Side Social's already functioning, the downtown park is being discussed at the same time, the Broad and Washington project was recently approved. So there's some momentum going on in those first few blocks of Park Avenue, and so this is an opportunity to use this amount of money that's available from this opportunity to replace the existing concrete with brick sidewalks, work with the property owners to make a six-foot sidewalk instead of a five-foot sidewalk, make the ADA crossings ADA compliant, as well as create a small bump out and information kiosk area at the corner of Maple and Park.
With bike racks.
With bike racks. So it'd include an information kiosk that's modeled off of the city's bus shelters, it would include bike racks, it would be space for public art at a future time, and it would actually really help show the value of curb extensions, because when you look at just how much extra pavement there is at that intersection, it's pretty remarkable how much wasted space there is. In fact, even when you watch folks driving that intersection today, they don't get anywhere near the curb lines, because there's no reason to.
Will, I don't suppose there's enough money to do anything about the telephone poles, sorry, the telephone poles in the middle of the sidewalk on the north side?
The north side, the utility undergrounding, that's what I think the heavy money from the Smart Scale award can deal with.
But are we going to do the brick sidewalk up there and work around the telephone poles?
The brick sidewalk here, what the EDA was discussing was brick sidewalk on the south side, that there are utilities there, but they're all underground utilities already. I think there's either a water line or a gas line. And so if you leave the curb line where it is, then you're not interfering with those underground utilities, whereas the overhead utilities, those are expensive, and there are a lot of property owners that have to be worked with.
Yeah, cool.
Just a couple of requests for you, Paul, is to give us, again, some information where the Bike Share... the Bike Share is going to be on up by the high school. There's going to be one up there.
I think you provide a map at one point.
There is a map. I can recirculate that.
Yeah, we could recirculate.
There were a lot of questions on that at the CBC booth.
One more.
Well, and some of it's going to move, the site plan for the high school will be coming before the planning commission at some point and that would be a good time to talk about Bike Share location. Right, I don't think you want to put it down at the corner of Broad and Haycock right now because that will be.
Construction site.
Right, it'll be 800 feet from the, from the middle school and 1,000 feet from the high school.
And just another thing, the 23rd is the next school town hall.
Right.
Sunday.
And that's committee meetings again, you know.
Well, thank you, thank you everybody for doing that.
And, you know, you can go if you're not even assigned to a committee, you could slip in and pick a committee.
That's what I kind of do.
You care about and join in.
It's sports and.
Yeah, yeah.
Since Bike Share came up, what is the date for the first station anywhere in the city open?
I think we had been hoping for a fall rollout. What we heard from our VDOT coordinators was that they're having trouble getting the contract approved with FHWA. So FHWA, federal funds are an interesting beast. So at this point, VDOT and FHWA had okayed the contract and now the council has authorized the city manager to execute it and apparently you now you cycle back to the FHWA to confirm they're really, really okay with it. I'm a little surprised by the process.
Yeah, I thought you were aiming for this fall, but.
We were, but I think we were hoping for a VDOT approval a couple days ago. That didn't happen. So now we're continuing to partner with VDOT and FHWA to make sure they've got all the right signatures on the right lines.
How is VDOT in it? Is it just because it's their money or?
It's not their money if it's FHWA, but they're the stewards of the.
Because we're not putting it, we're putting it in like the city lot over.
Correct. It's all on city-owned property for the first phase. Phase two, we'll be partnering with other owners.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, I'd love to see it.
Yes.
I have people that would actually use it.
And I know this is not your area, but the parking spaces that are on North Maple, I personally like them because now when you try to come out of the shopping center, people aren't driving as fast because it used to be very hard if you went to Doodle Hoppers to come out because people were just, it's slow traffic. But when are they going to redo the lines? Because I think what's confusing is they covered up the line, but they haven't replaced the line.
They said they did.
Did they? Because that didn't a couple days ago when I was on there.
Yeah, street painting is a tricky thing that the paint you want to stay wears away and the paint you want to go away is apparently absorbed so deeply into the earth that it cannot be removed. So that center line was eradicated, but you can still see it. So the eradication process was performed, but, but obviously there's still remnants of the line there.
But I don't think they put the new one down yet.
Is there going to be a new one?
A new center line?
Yeah. They need it because it would help people understand where they're supposed to be.
I think that would help.
And it would get them, because right now you can see part of the old line and people are just kind of like, the parked cars are in their way kind of deal. But there's room, there's plenty of room there for two lanes of traffic and those parked cars if the line is in the right place. And I think that would help people be less confused.
I also think if it, if it did fade away, I mean, part of it is because we can still sort of, if we're totally gone, it would force people to actually just drive on the side of the road.
Right.
They're like, can I drive?
The center line can be effective. That was a tool that was used, actually, in the Pennsylvania Avenue Traffic Calming case. They had some frustrations with the curve. So Pennsylvania takes a bend as it approaches Great Falls and a center line was installed, but just for the curve to guide people to stay on their side.
That's one way.
Any other planning commission reports?
We're in the race for the schools.
I did too. I helped plan it.
I did the walk. Came in last.
It was fun?
It was a busy weekend. It was a.
You came and lost of the walkers or just?
It's our role.
My business donated money and we got shirts, but then after getting up so early to put our booth up for Fall Festival, we weren't willing to get up early a second, being ruined.
You did finish ahead of everyone who didn't do it.
But it was, it was home, you know, it was homecoming up at the schools, Fall Festival, run for the schools. It was really some busy, busy weekend.
And even Center had one of their festivals, which I wish they would have on the same day.
Luckily no hurricanes.
That's true.
I wish the schools would notify adjacent property owners of the route because.
I get, I get a letter in the mail.
I have literally set up the course for 10 straight years. They should know the route by now. It's the same route.
I get a letter in the mail.
But then they forget it's coming. They don't forget it's coming, but our street is blocked, the street on which I live is blocked. And then the sheriff's department and police officers were yelling at us because we were trying to get out to go to our house.
Really?
Yeah.
I get a letter, I'm pretty sure I get a letter in the mail. I don't know. I just set it up.
The city puts out a press release, I know that. You get the city alerts, emails and stuff.